Oh, maybe she can.
Oh.
Can you hear us, Darcy?
Good morning, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, uh, we're ready for you.
Great. Good morning, commissioners. Um, I'm joined by Matt Crosser with Economic and Planning Systems this morning, and um, we're gonna give you a quick update here. Let me share my screen and we'll get started. Right. Are you seeing what you're supposed to see?
We don't know what we're supposed to see.
Yes.
All right.
It is up there.
You have the present interview on.
Okay.
There, see? Yeah. There you go.
There we go. All right. Well, uh, good morning, everyone, and just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the overall process, with the land use plan. So we are, um, squaring in phase four of five at this point. We're making good progress in terms of our overall timeline. We discussed, uh, last month that we had, um, made some adjustments to the overall timeline to try to respond to, um, the feedback that we'd gotten and, you know, kind of a desire to keep things moving pretty quickly. So we are gearing up for our next round of meetings in early October. That's what we want to focus our discussion with you on this morning is to just kind of let you know what we're gonna be presenting and kind of where we are. But we also wanted to, um, let you know, I think, um, in discussions with our core team last week, the other adjustments to the timeline that we've discussed is that, once we get through the October meetings, assuming we get the feedback we're looking for, um, we're moving in the right direction based on the feedback we hear, we will be shooting to, um, kind of move right into drafting mode, um, which would mean we would be preparing a staff draft before the end of the year. So that would be something we'd be working with our core team to refine, um, and then coming back to do our next round of meetings, um, probably late in January or early February. We haven't nailed down dates yet, but that's tentatively what we're looking at, and that would put us in kind of adoption draft mode, um, sometime in the April timeframe. So we'll continue to refine that schedule, um, but just know that we're, we're working as hard and fast as we can to kind of keep that, keep that moving. So I did want to, as we get into this next round of up, of outreach, just kind of step back and talk quickly about, you know, kind of the outreach we've done as a whole, and remind folks of where we started and what our intent was. And, you know, I think when we put together our initial public engagement plan early in the process, you know, we, we discussed with you, we really need to focus on, um, you know, kind of overall numbers, but also kind of who we're involving in the process, where they live, you know, all of those different factors. So just wanted to kind of, you know, remind folks where we were, um, overall, um, and we did talk about this early in the process. There would be a lot of opportunities for feedback, and I, just in the process so far, we've had thirty-six different meetings or surveys, you know, different points where people can engage with the process. And some of those have been focused on specific targeted, you know, stakeholder groups that we were meeting with early in the process. But, um, you know, all of those really contribute to, um, you know, the, the level of feedback that we need, um, through the process. And then in terms of overall numbers, um, you know, our biggest, um, batch obviously came through our initial value, vision and value survey, um, that we wrapped up at the end of May. But collectively, we've had, you know, eight hundred and fifty, you know, substantive points of feedback from the public, um, through this process so far. Um, if we look at, you know, all of our focus groups, all of the different meetings we've done, um, you know, I think our participation numbers, um, in those in-person settings have been, uh, you know, right around three forty or so. And then, you know, looking at the collective feedback that we've gotten. So we've got a lot to work with. Um, we are gonna continue to push just as hard as we can, working with staff, to get the word out for these October meetings and make sure that, you know, we continue to get strong feedback. But I think we've had the question a couple of times, you know, kind of what's typical in a process like this. And I think, um, I've mentioned, and I'll, I'll mention again, um, you know, I think we, it is rare for us to see kind of the same level of participation from start to finish in a process. So we are really building on that, but we're also looking for feedback as we get more specific. So if folks are just joining the process, they should know that, um, you know, as we get further along, you know, we're gonna be asking for more and more specific feedback on actual recommendations versus the general, uh, questions, uh, early in the process. So in terms of our, um, October input opportunities, this is where we're really shifting into doing more in-person engagement. So this round, we are gonna be in town, uh, Monday, October third through Thursday, the sixth. We actually, um, head back out Friday morning, and we've got six different public meetings scheduled. So we are gonna be, um, all over the place. Um, we've got, um, four different, uh, in-person, I'm sorry, four different evening meetings planned in North Fork, uh, Cody, Powell, and South Fork. And then we're also gonna do two daytime, um, meetings, um, uh, in Matitzi and in Clark. And so we're trying to balance things as best we can, but part of our strategy in working with staff to get these scheduled was thinking about where we drew the biggest crowds last time and making sure that we're kind of aligning, um, those evening meetings with those areas where we know we have a lot of participants. They also happen to be the areas where, as Matt will talk about, um, you know, kind of we're seeing the biggest, uh, pressures in terms of growth and a lot of the issues that we're gonna be focused on. So, um, beyond that, there will still be other opportunities for folks to weigh in this round. We're gonna do a virtual public meeting the following Wednesday. Um, so if someone's out of town or, you know, just can't make it to one of those in-person meetings, um, we will have that opportunity, and then we'll have our third and final kind of survey, um, that mirrors the, the public meeting materials that we'll, we'll be sharing. So, um, and that will be open through the end of October. So plenty of opportunities for folks to still weigh in, um, on this process. And as I said, it's getting more and more specific as we go, so more and more important that we hear from folks about what's important to them in their particular planning areas, um, this go-around. We met with our, uh, Loop PAC last week to preview some of the materials that we're gonna share with you today. We're continuing to refine them, um, but we'll meet with them again, um, at, uh, when we're in town in October. And so, um, wanted to just give you kind of a quick rundown on what we're gonna cover, um, at those meetings. Matt is gonna jump in first and talk about some of what he's been working on over the last month or so, um, in terms of the county-wide trends and forecasting, and then I'll jump back in and touch briefly on, um, the growth factors and the key policy choices.
Thanks, Thirsey. Uh, it's good to be with you all. So we've been doing, uh, collective team has been doing some, um, very in-depth technical analysis to, to underpin, uh, and help set up the key policy choices that we're gonna talk to the community about. And so we wanted to share with you sort of what we've been looking into and what we've been finding. So you have that same background that our steering committee does, as well as some of our technical advisors as well. So one thing that we, we recognized when we were developing sort of existing conditions data to support the plan is that the forecast for population growth that the state created, um, for Park County showed a relatively low, uh, rate of growth over the next twenty years, which is really our plan horizon. Um, having the city, or sorry, the county grow from, you know, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred residents to, um, thirty-two thousand residents, uh, in the next twenty years, which was an annual rate of about point three-seven percent, which is, um, a, a, a fair amount lower than what had been experienced in the past twenty years. And so what we wanted to do was to, one, dig into those forecasts to get a sense of why that might be the forecast that the state has developed, and then, two, um, consider perhaps developing a range, uh, of, uh, sort of, uh, high and low growth forecast. So using the state's population forecast as sort of the low number, and then a, a sort of high number based on more recent trends. Um, and so what we have is a forecast, a tentative forecast now that shows growth, um, to about thirty-two to thirty-three, five hundred, uh, in terms of population by twenty forty, a, a range of annual growth rates of point three-seven percent, six point, uh, six point six percent annually, um, you know, representing a couple of different trends and sort of findings that we've, we've had through the process. On the next slide, um, I'll sort of start to illustrate some of what we've been finding and why perhaps the state's forecast was a little low. This, um, this chart shows, uh, the rates, the annual rates of births, deaths, and net immigration into the county over the last thirty years or so. And what we're seeing is that the, the county's been experiencing a pretty substantial growth of residents that are over the age of sixty-five, growing about three percent per year over the last twenty years. At the same time, the growth rate for what we kind of refer to as the workforce population, so folks sixteen to sixty-five, and the younger residents has been significantly lower, just barely above zero, especially for those younger residents. And seeing that, uh, senior age population really becoming a major, uh, greater share of the overall population. Um, and then what, we wanted to dig into some employment trends, uh, to, to look at this as well. And sort of what we started to recognize is that the, the state's forecast really starts to reflect this slowing of the, the workforce population and, um, some more recent employment trends that they, the county had been experiencing. Uh, you all know that, you know, the economic base of the county is really, um, driven by agriculture, tourism, and services to sort of a regional population. And the recent growth in employment has really been, uh, within those industries, uh, specifically healthcare and, uh, but we're also seeing growth in industries like real estate and professional services that are really supporting, um, that growth in, I think, both tourism services as well as, um, what is somewhat of sort of a, a retire, a growing retiree population within the county. Um, and so, uh, on the next slide, what we've done is we've taken the population forecast that the state has created, our higher-level growth population for, uh, growth forecast for population, and developed to employment populate, or employment growth forecast as well, so baseline and a, a high-growth or recent trends forecast. And some of the things that we noticed when we were doing that is that, um, first, the employment, uh, employment in the county has outpaced the growth of population over the past two decades. So the employment in the county has grown quicker than the population has. And so I think one of the reasons this has been able to occur is there's been a significant, pretty significant increase in the number of workers that commute from, um, outside the county into the county to work. And so, you know, in two thousand and two, there was about ten percent of the workforce that commuted into the county. Uh, that's over twenty percent now. Um, and so we're seeing more people come from outside Park County to, to work in the county. Um, and we're also seeing continued growth, um, in a lot of sectors and, um, showing sort of a, a pace of employment growth that doesn't necessarily, at least in recent years, doesn't necessarily reflect that population forecast that we had. And really what our major finding from looking at this was is, if the county is to sustain its recent rate of economic activity, the, the labor force or the population's gonna need to grow for that to be reality. And so it makes sense to us to, to have both sort of a low and high forecast for both population employment to help support the land use plan. And so, um, we've also used these forecasts to look at housing demand and how that might impact specifically on import, unincorporated portion of the county. And so, um, the chart here shows the baseline forecast and recent trends forecast for housing demand over the next twenty years, uh, and then, you know, at least for now, holding that forty-five percent capture rate of, uh, new housing going within the unincorporated portion of the county, which is, matches historic trends. Um, a couple of indicators also that we looked at include housing vacancy, which is at thirteen point seven percent, at least in the most recent census data, within vacancy is, um, short-term, um, sorry, uh, seasonal rentals. Um, and so I think a fair amount of sort of that increasing housing vacancy rate is related to more seasonal housing as well, as opposed to sort of, uh, full-time residents within households. Um, well, on the last slide here, uh, we wanted to make sure that we were factoring in sort of more recent trends. We heard a lot of qualitative feedback from variety of stakeholders and community members that, uh, the pace and chain, rate of change in the county over the last two or three years has really been, uh, increasing and substantial, especially compared to sort of the previous decade. And so we looked back at billing permit data for the county. We looked at new address requests. We looked at water tap activities, um, from Northwest Rural Water and some other indicators to just really see what the rate of change over the last three to five years has been and how that compares to what has occurred over the past decade or two. And what we found is, yes, the data is indicating sort of growing, uh, levels of development and construction activity, um, starting to reach the rates that were present more in the mid-nineties and mid-two thousands. Um, and so, uh, we're trying to couple a couple, or reconcile a couple of trends where population, especially the workforce population, was relatively flat in terms of its growth. The state was thinking it's not really gonna grow much, and compare that to this, like, increase of housing demand. And really starting to think that it, it appears to be driven, you know, by an increase in seasonal homeowners, retirees, and even potential short-term rental usage. And really, it calls out to us the need for a housing study for the county to really understand how some of these trends are impacting housing availability and access. I mean, just also recognizing that, you know, some of these trends like short-term rentals and others, uh, have a big, could potentially be impacted by the land use plan, and policies within the land use plan can really perhaps mitigate some of the negative impacts if the community is interested in exploring those. So wanting to highlight those trends and factors for you all. Um, the other, um, Dorothy, I don't know if we wanna move on or take any questions at this point.
Might make sense to, um, pause for questions if there are any, since it's a lot of info.
Yeah.
Any questions from the commissioners at this time? I think we're good. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. So, um, I guess one more quick note on the, 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 um, trends information. Um, Joy has set up a, um, a call, uh, in a couple of weeks to, to meet with some local folks who kind of dig into the sorts of information that Matt shared on a more regular basis, just to kind of help, um, you know, kind of work through the, the, there, I guess, for context, there is a very detailed technical memo and a lot of, a, a lot of data behind the, you know, kind of high-level overview that Matt shared. And so that's something that we will be, um, working with, uh, you know, kind of a small group to kind of, um, review and refine if we need to, um, as we go through, um, the next few weeks and gear up for our meetings. Um, so the other pieces of information that we wanted to circle back on. So last month, um, Ryan Clarkson with TO Engineers shared, um, his initial, uh, work on the, um, suitability analysis. And so just a, a quick reminder, you know, kind of early, uh, information that we shared was that one of the first steps in that process of developing the suitability analysis was looking at, you know, kind of Park County is a very large place. It covers a lot of area, and a lot of that land really isn't, um, you know, it may attract development in some cases. It may happen, but, um, most of that is, is largely not suitable for development. And so we kind of did an initial screen to narrow down to the blue areas, which really focus on private land, um, within Park County. And so over the last month, um, or so, we've worked with our technical working group and, um, TO engineers to work through, uh, a series of analysis criteria to kind of screen and evaluate the private land, essentially the, the, the blue areas on the previous map, and determine, um, kind of which areas are likely to be more suitable, you know, or less suitable for development based on a series of criteria. So we worked through a whole lot of options, but narrowed down, narrowed it down to the five, um, that we show there, and there are multiple tiers in some cases. But, um, digging into things like access to infrastructure, um, both municipal and rural, um, access to services in terms of, you know, how likely, um, that is to factor into where development occurs, distance to different types of roads, recognizing that those also have a cost impact, um, things like steep slopes and also soil characteristics. So how suitable are different soils for, um, uh, basements, septics, and those types of things. So this was really, you know, there are a lot of other things you could throw into the mix. Um, this is what we focused on in terms of having the, um, the greatest impact on where development is, is likely to occur and where, where we're gonna see those demands in the future. Um, we talked about other, um, suitability factors that would kind of be layered on at the time of development. So we're obviously looking at the county as a whole. Um, but when you, in the future, after a plan is adopted, you'd be looking at some additional things like blood hazards, uh, wetlands, conservation easements, those types of things, um, when you got down to a little bit more of a site scale. So it's not that they're not important, um, but for the purposes of this analysis, we were trying to focus on the, the big things. And so you can see the different shading, um, on, um, the map in terms of, of those areas. Uh, the blue areas, the darkest blue is the most suitable, um, ranging to the, uh, the gray, which is the unsuitable. Um, so that's really kind of the baseline for our, um, you know, kind of any type of testing that we wanna do for, uh, different scenarios that might emerge from this next stage in the process. So to help the public kind of put that into context, um, I'm not gonna go into the details of this today, but just to kind of let you know what, what we'll cover, um, we talk about, um, the role of domestic water in terms of, you know, how much we have and, and how, uh, how much infrastructure we have to get that where it needs to go. Um, we'll talk about the role of current zoning in terms of, you know, kind of, uh, an influencing factor. And, and one of the things that we can look at moving forward to potentially, uh, uh, you know, kind of help accomplish different goals. Um, and then market demand. Um, Matt didn't get into the details, um, in his overview, but the other piece of, of his analysis was to look at, um, growth forecasts, um, by planning areas. So looking at, um, kind of what the demand has been and, and kind of, uh, permit activity in each planning area historically, and what that might mean going forward. And then we looked at conflict areas. And so that really came down to, um, irrigated ag land and then crucial wildlife habitat. And those were the two things we heard a lot about in our, uh, initial survey and the follow-up discussion about the vision and goals. So all of those things kind of, you know, work together to help us understand, um, you know, kind of where we're likely to see, you know, A, where is growth most suitable and therefore likely to, to kind of, um, be attracted? And then where do we have areas that are, um, also suitable but have higher degrees of conflict? So, um, we have a whole series of slides that really kind of, um, breaks down. This scatter chart is, is based on the numbers essentially behind the map, um, in, in terms of the percentages of, uh, suitability versus the, the percentages of area that are, um, considered to be conflicts. And so, again, doesn't mean that things can't happen in those areas, but it helps us narrow down where we wanna focus the conversation and, and really kind of tee up the issues that we will be talking about. So for the purposes of the October meetings, we've kind of broken it into three groups. Um, and, you know, obviously the issues, um, and opportunities will be different in those different areas ultimately in the plan. So that's really gonna be an important tool for us, um, as we get further into the process, just to help the community understand, you know, kind of what might come into play in different areas. And then the last thing, um, you know, basically, all of, all of what we've talked about so far will really lead into what we're calling our key policy choices. And so, um, when we were in town in June, um, we talked about kind of big picture vision and goals, and that's really kind of the starting point for, you know, kind of what we're looking, um, for in terms of feedback. So we had strong direction and strong feedback on certain things, um, and others, you know, now we need to know kind of, uh, if we really wanna achieve these goals, you know, what is the community interested in pursuing? What types of strategies to potentially achieve those goals? And so, um, we will be asking questions, um, related to a whole series of topics, but you can kind of see the, the biggies on the left there, um, things like growth management, conservation, whether it's ag or wildlife habitat, and we'll address those separately, recognizing that, um, you know, different people may have different opinions about how they wanna approach those, those two topics. Um, housing, Matt touched on, you know, kind of the, the, the importance of that in the context of, you know, whether we have a low growth or high growth, and, you know, kind of what happens in the unincorporated areas. And then there's, um, also some land use questions related to the economy in terms of, you know, what types of non-residential uses might we like to see in different areas? So, um, one of the things we heard from our Loop PAC, uh, last week, when we kind of previewed some of the questions and information that we shared with them, is that they, they really wanted to have a bit more context, um, for each of these topics. So understanding where we are today in terms of, uh, existing policies and regulations, what the county's role is currently in these different areas. I think we had a lot of questions through our outreach so far. Either people saying we want the county to take a more aggressive role or a more proactive role in certain things. We also had people saying we don't think that they have a role in these issues. And so that's part of what we're really trying to tease out through these next, um, meetings is, is sort of, what's the appropriate role for the county, um, and, you know, kind of how far you want to go, um, in, in kind of pursuing these. So, um, we'll be looking at kind of a spectrum approach in terms of, you know, baseline, uh, scenario. We can kind of, uh, make some targeted adjustments, for example, to, um, your regulations to address certain issues. Um, there are other opportunities that we can kind of take things a little bit further. So we're gonna be using, um, keypad polling, um, to facilitate this next round of meetings, which will help us understand, um, you know, I think where everyone in the room comes down. It's, it's, it's a very effective tool when we're trying to really get a sense of, of, you know, a, a clearer understanding of kind of how everyone feels, um, make sure everyone in the room has a voice in the process. So we'll be able to see live results as we do that and, and then mirror that, uh, information.
Darcy.
Yeah.
Darcy, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We do have a public hearing at ten o'clock, so we're gonna have to wrap it up here pretty shortly.
All right. And we, and that's actually a good segue, and we are, uh, just about done. So, um, next steps, um, we have that focus group I mentioned. We'll be refining this material for, um, the public meetings. And then, um, just a reminder, um, for folks to check the website, um, if they want to, um, sign up, um, contact us or submit comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, questions from the commissioners at this time? There's none here. Appreciate the updated information and looking forward to the meetings in October.
Thank you. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, with that, um, the next thing on our agenda is the land use plan, oops, update, sorry. Um, public hearing, Molnar Lawson variance request, uh, Mr. Delvin, planning and zoning.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. So for this project, the applicant is Michael Molnar. The property is in the, uh, general twenty zoning, and the planning area is in Middle South Fork. So we did receive a variance request from Mr. Molnar on August twelfth of this year, including payment supplement and materials. And what the applicant requests is a variance from requirement that conventional subdivisions in a GR twenty-eight that conventional subdivisions in a GR 20 acre zoning district average at least 20 acres per housing unit. And should this variance be approved, the applicant would like to begin the subdivision review property uh, process. And he would like to divide a parcel of land that is currently 39.96 acres, and he would like to make that to 19.98 acre lots. And you see in figure two, just a a brief look at a sketch plan of what possibly he would like it to look like. And my understanding is there'd be a lot to the east and a lot to the west. So on our our staff report, page one, it has the purpose of variance. Of course, that's to allow flexibility in our regulations, especially if it should create hardship or difficulty for an applicant. Plicability of a variance, um, again, if it would um, if the strict application of our regs would deny the applicant use of land buildings or structure. Of course, you can know, the board can only vary things out of our regs, not any state statutes. And then the bottom of page one of our staff report, it talks about the procedure for variance, should be made in writing, um, public hearing requirements are required. And of course, there are four, there are four conditions that have to be met. In terms, since this is a public hearing, the notice was put in the Cody enterprise. One occurred on August 23rd of this year, the other one on August 30th. We also sent that notice to neighboring landowners. That letter was mailed out on August 18th. We shared the staff report with all of you and with the applicant prior to today. The owner is uh, Mr. Molnar and Mrs. Lawson. And the location of this property is approximately nine miles southwest of Cody, it's south of County Road 6WX, which is South Fork Road, and west of County Road 6PR, has an address of 1222 South Fork Road. As I mentioned, this is in the GR 20 zoning district. And Madam Chair, you see in figure two, the the location of the property in particular relative to Cody. Terms of neighboring land use, land use is directly around the property, residential agricultural and residential vacant. And I I should mention, um, you might remember this, Madam Chair. It's been, I believe, a few years ago, but the Hertz or simple subdivision, which is a two lot subdivision, is just to the north of this property. And if I remember correctly, they also had a parcel that was just under 40 acres. A variance was approved, and then they went ahead and split that into a simple subdivision. Terms of site characteristics, there are some buildings on this property and one residence and one, I believe, one septic. It is it um, in the southwest portion of the property. In terms of topography, you can see or you saw in figure four, property is fairly flat. This property is not within a mile of any municipality. We did contact relevant agencies, they responded. Park County Treasurer said property taxes have been paid. Wyoming Game and Fish did respond, they had some concerns. We shared those cons, um, I believe we shared that letter with them. I don't have it at sa- attached here. Anyhow, they did say this property is a crucial mule um, winter range, mule their winter range. And they recommend human activity being avoided basically in the winter months. Public Works responded, they have no concerns or objectives or objections. Um, some other notices were sent to various agencies, um, and we didn't get any response. Madam Chair, we did get one public comment. We shared that with you, that came in by email on August 25th. And if I remember correctly, it was essentially just, um, you know, if we have regs, those regs need to be followed to the best of of our ability. In terms of the variance approval standards, the first one is, are there special circumstances or conditions that are peculiar to the land building or structure and do not apply to other items in the area? Applicants' responses requesting a variance from our regs that basically say in this zoning district, um, lot sizes have to be at least 20 acres in size for conventional systems, um, average of 20 acres for any subdivision. And they mentioned that they're just short of that 20 acre minimum. Our response is, we talked about the government resurvey early in the 1900s. It depicted lot 63 as 160 acre parcels. At some point, that was broken up into the four portions, each, I believe each just under 40 acres, but we do know this one, of course, is under 40 acres. Second dish, condition is circumstances or conditions are such that application of our regs would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. Again, the applicant said that, again, they want a variance to our part of the regulations that require uh, 20 acre minimum average. Our response is, um, strict application of our regs would prohibit subdivision of the property. However, the applicant would be able to pursue other uses. And I did, we did mention in a note, middle of page eight, the parcel just north of this, a variance was approved and a subdivision did occur. Number three is granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use thereof. Again, granting, the applicant said granting of this variance is reasonable use of the intent of the zoning um, requirements. Our response is, again, the opportunity to subdivide is one use of land. However, there are all other uses that the applicant should choose that would be consistent with our regs. Number four, condition number four is granting of the variances in harmony and is consistent with the land use plan and will not be injurious to public health, safety and welfare. Applicants said the variance is in harmony with the land use plan. They mentioned the parcel to the north was allowed to have a variance. And they said this request will not be detrimental to public health, safety and welfare, will not be injurious to any neighboring property owners. Our response to that is granting of a variance appears to be in harmony with the intent of the land use plan. And yeah. And so conditions of the variance, of course, you, should you grant the variance, you can impose conditions. And then in the middle of page nine, we talk about the effect of approval. The the variance, of course, does not guarantee that other requests will be made. And then below that expiration of a variance, it does expire after one year unless um, construction or development is commenced. And you can authorize up to a year of an extension. Madam Chair, we have staff findings. Our recommend and our recommendation is deny the variance because not all of the conditions um, have been met. We do have some conditions, should you choose to grant the variance. If I, you don't mind, I'll read those real quick. Number one would be, again, condition, should you grant the variance? These are our recommended conditions. This variance grants the applicant the opportunity to proceed with a simple subdivision to split the parcel into two 19.98 acre lots in the GR 20 zoning district. The second recommended condition, the applicant shall place a note on the final plat saying that no further subdivision of the lots would be allowed under our current regulations. Number three is the applicant should otherwise comply with the standards in our standards and regulations. We're happy to answer questions, should you have any.
Any questions at this time from the commissioners?
Yeah, I've got one quick question. In your uh, rec- staff recommendation, you say that uh, you recommend denial because all of the conditions of approval have not been met.
Yep.
Which one was not met? Just the fact that they're not 20 acres?
Well, and yes, um, Commissioner Tilden, Madam Chair, not 20 acres. And you know, part of it is, it it talks about restricting whether or not the applicant can reasonably use the land. So what what we tried to say, at least for some of those, um, by not granting the variance, the applicant cannot subdivide, but certainly there are other uses that would be allowed on this lay and consistent with our regs.
Okay, alright.
Any other commissioner questions at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Tilden.
So if you, he can't do a simple subdivisions, but is there an opportunity to do a major? If he went through the process?
No.
It has to be.
No.
Not without the variance, correct?
No other way to split the land without the variance.
Yeah.
No matter what something is type.
Hey, this is a public hearing, so I would ask for public comment. And if you comment, if you would please stand and state your name for the record, please. Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Walker, and I'm a neighbor. This is not nine miles out. It's 1221, so it's 12 miles point 21 miles out. So it's, so in the letter, it 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 kind of makes you want to know where that land is. It's not in that subdivision, but the nine miles out.
Okay.
And I'm concerned that it cannot be divided past that. I mean, people move out there to be away from the city.
Mm-hmm.
And now we have people buying 40 acres and then wanting to divide it.
Mm-hmm.
And that just doesn't make any sense to me. It's, I have a neighboring ranch to it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time?
Madam Chair, Corey Schatz with Engineering Associates. Uh, just wanted to say, we understand that the zoning was supposed to be 20 acres, 40 acres. It was intended to be allocated parts, and I think you saw in there that when that was surveyed, it was supposed to be an allocated part, but it was just a little bit less. And that, yeah, Kim did mention that that Hertzler simple sub 261, just above there, was approved in July of 2020, and it had about that same thing. It had 19.99 and 19.98 acres. And then as I read through the um, the staff report, um, we agreed with the county engineer, they started talking about rounding, that we could round it to 20 if we didn't go out to any significant decimal places. So it would be a 20 acre parcel, but since we saw that the subdivision to the north was allowed, presidents, so other already allowed to be point one, point oh two acres shy. That's just what we're asking for on this current request.
Thank you.
And we have the answering request. Any questions? Commissioners?
I have a quick question for you. It it was, it's stated here that uh, there may have been uh, special circumstances. What could that have been? I mean, if you got 160, you split.
They used to put stones out there and they measured with, you know, the the survey precision back in the day wasn't as it is.
Understand.
Tell that to my dad. He could get it close. You point oh one acre close. Um, but yeah, so, yeah, whenever this this mile was broken up, it wasn't a true mile. It was off a little bit. And I like to say I could move the stone another three feet and then I get that point oh one acre. But I surveyed it what it was, and that's where we come up to it. And when I saw this and one to the north was the same way, I try to look back. I didn't see that they had got a variance, but I just saw that they had got approval on their subdivision. So I would just kind of figure that, because we're trying to line it up exactly like the ones to the north. It's going to be the old rectangle parcel, just like the ones to the north, so.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public?
Madam Chair, I'm going to tell the public here. Second.
So moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the pleasure of the commissioners?
I'm trying to get a couple quick. So I guess the question would be to the applicant. When you purchased the property in 2021?
I'm the applicant.
Oh, you're the, you're the applicant.
For the next meeting.
Alright. Anyway, wait. When the applicant purchased the property in 2021, was there a survey done of the property then?
There wasn't, his brother sold when he had 40 acres.
That's what they said. Okay. So the the only real survey that we're aware of is the one from 19.
To do the subdivision.
Is yours and then the one from 1907, the original survey?
No.
Okay.
And then Kim, our our regulations are the South Fork service area or the zoning out there is GR 20.
It is.
So they are allowed to do down to 20 acre parcels.
Yep. Average, average.
Average. Okay. Any other questions or?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is just a quick comment. And the comment being that a lot of things happened back in the old days, especially on the South Fork, after living out there for a lot of years. I know a piece of property I used to own, and I don't know when, somebody moved the corner marker like 50 feet, and it screwed up everything. So there's a lot of these discrepancies that happen out there. So that being said, I'll make the motion to approve the variance.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the variance as requested, um, including conditions?
Yes.
Yeah. Including, yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Right, thank you, commissioners.
Hey, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing for Cardo's zoning map amendment. And Mr. Delvin, if you would, 13.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant is Mr. Cardo's. This property is in the residential one half acre zoning district, planning area is Cody local. We did receive a zoning map amendment application from Mr. Cardo's on June 2nd, including payment and supporting information. And the applicant requests approval of the zoning map amendment, and it would rezone a 50.46 acre parcel of land from residential one half acre to GR 5, at least that's what he's requesting. And the applicant is considering subdividing the property into lots greater than five acres. And the property does not have public water or public sewer at this time. And the background, on October 14th of last year, the applicant met with us in a pre-application meeting to talk about a potential subdivision. At that time, Mr. Cardo's was interested in subdividing, but he wasn't sure on how many lots he wanted. And then on April 21st of this year, he met with us again, and we had a lengthy discussion with him. Um, and he brought us some information too. We had a discussion regarding the requirements for subdividing in a residential one half acre zoning district. And he expressed a desire to move forward with the zoning map amendment. Essentially, again, what we talked with him in April would have been the fact that RH requires domestic sewer and water. There were some difficulties with that. In his application materials, Mr. Cardo's explained that this property is constrained by the lack of adequate utilities. He's had conversations with the city of Cody, and he was made aware that annexation into the Cody is possible because he's just, he's right on the edge of the city of Cody. However, the city said it would require city services, water, sewer, power, be extended to the property lines. That he said that, according to the city, some of these services would require extensions of at least 1,500 feet. It would um, be very expensive. And also, the city would require him, should he be annexed, would require him to pave Poly Avenue, again, at considerable expense. And he said without annexation, public sewer and water would not be available. And of course, these services, according to our regulations, are required for residential development in an RH zoning district. As I mentioned, this property is in the RH zoning district. We have a paragraph of what that means. On the second page of our staff report, we have a a description out of our regs of what, um, of how you describe the GR 5 zoning district, because that's what he would like this to be ro- rezoned to. And then on the second and third paragraphs on page two, what we did, we took residential uses in GR 5 and RH and compared them and see where there was, um, where the same things were allowed and what the permit would be required and where they're not the same. And then the third paragraph regarding residential business uses, we again compared GR 5 and RH, where they're the same and where they're different. So we tried to make a comparison, how GR 5 and how RH are both similar and how they're different. This property is owned by Mr. Cardo's. Location, you can see in figure one, it's just southwest of Cody city limits. It's a little bit west of Highway 291, and it's directly south of Poly Avenue. In terms of site characteristics, we have a topo map. There is some slope to this property, change in elevation, moving southwest to northeast. This property is currently vacant. In figure three, we show a map showing residential, or I'm sorry, showing current uses. You can see to the northeast of this approximate 50 acre parcel that is a city of Cody subdivision. And then around this, there's some commercial, there's some residential, there's some agriculture. Madam Chair, on in figure four, we have a map showing zoning districts. Where that RH is, that is right in the middle of this existing parcel. And so obviously, it's in RH zoning, in the city of Cody's to the northeast. GR 5 is to the, is to the west and southwest. There is some commercial property to the northwest. None of this property is in an overlay district. We put notices in the Cody enterprise. We put notices in the Cody enterprise advertising this public hearing on August second and August sixteenth of this year. On August fifth, we sent those notices, that same notice out to neighboring property owners. We notified relevant agencies. Public Works responded. They have no comments or concerns regarding this CMA. Treasurer, Park County Treasurer stated that property taxes are current for twenty twenty one. YDOT stated they have no concerns, provided if this does move forward into a future subdivision. They would like access from two Highway two ninety one from Poly Avenue or Aqua via Lane. Fire District number two stated they have no comments. Weeden Pest, Mary stated she has no comments or concerns. Municipal review. Of course, this is within one mile of the city of Cody. So we did notice notify the city of Cody for their comments, and we've not received any response. We've not received any written public comments, Madam Chair. Um at the bottom of page seven of our staff report, we have some um land use considerations. We talk about um urban land. This parcel is in, according to the land use plan, it's urban area. And urban land uses, according to the land use plan, generally suitable should someone subdivide of half an acre to two acre subdivisions, conditionally suitable for two to five acre subdivisions. And I believe not suitable for five to twenty acre subdivisions. And Madam Chair, the land use plan, when it says conditionally suitable, that just means the land is suitable for that use provided a review, such as a review before the commissioners um occurs. And nineteen ninety seven City of Cody master plan designated this YouTube map unit, which is where this property is. For res- they designated as appropriate for residential use only. On page eight, we have a map that came from the nineteen ninety eight land use plan. That arrow signifies where that property is. Again, it's in a a urban um district in that land use plan. And then on page nine, we have again a page out of our land use plan. And again, it talks about urban as being, um you know, as as lot sizes, whether they're suitable, conditionally suitable or not suitable. On the top of page ten, we have the application requirements for a zoning map amendment. First of all, we need a legal land description. That has been met. We need a written statement regarding, consistent with our standards. That has been met. We did get a written statement from the applicant, and of course, the landowner did sign that approval. Um in term, the approval standards. Number one is, and I'm on the middle of page ten, number one is a map amendment does not single out a parcel for land for a zoning classification that would promote a land use that is incompatible or inconsistent with the existing or planned uses of the sur- surrounding area. The applicant stated the requested zoning map amendment from RH to GR five is the same as the current zoning of the property to the west, meaning GR five is to the west. Second condition for a zoning map amendment is the amendment in accordance with the county's land use plan and with any municipal plans having jurisdiction. The applicant stated discussion with the city of Cody. He said they have no plans to expand their jurisdiction to this property. He said, again, the applicant said annexing into the city is not an option at this time, essentially, I believe because of expense. Because to have all those services and have the road paved. And the applicant said by changing the current zoning, he thinks it will be beneficial, expand the use of the property, and will promote larger acre parcels for people to enjoy real living. Number uh number three, the third condition, the map amendment substantially addresses a public purpose or need that outweighs any detriment to the rights of neighboring property owners. Applicant said by completing the zoning map amendment, it'll cause the property from being subdivided possibly down to half acre parcels into nothing smaller than five acre parcel parcels. So he sees that as um evidently as a benefit. And then the fourth condition, the map amendment may be made at the sole discretion of the board to classify land as commercial or industrial. That's historically been utilized for those purposes. Of course, that doesn't apply here, Madam Chair. Terms of P and Z, they heard this application in a public hearing on July twentieth. They recommended that the zoning map uh amendment be approved. Starting on uh towards the top of page eleven. Um we did a staff evaluation, um Madam Chair. I'll try to be brief. Um basically, what we talked about, there is Cody property to the northeast. Otherwise, most or some of the surrounding parcels are greater than five acres. I think that you know, might indicate that GR five zoning might be appropriate. We also, we also mentioned, again, I'll try to summarize. So the land use plan talks about this area is not suitable for five acre larger lot sizes, conditionally suitable for two to five acre average lot sizes, generally suitable for for half an acre to two acre lot sizes. So again, our conclusion is if GR five, if this property was in GR five, it'd be an average minimum of five acre lot sizes that is conditionally suitable. Um and we think um appropriate according to the land use plan. And then the rest of our staff report, Madam Chairs, we just have some options, things that you could, I guess, in a way statements you could state, should you approve the the variance or should you not grant the variance? And again, we, you know, we did, we did talk about really the three conditions that apply to this. We have some findings of fact. Our recommendation is that we set a review of the factors that we utilize to develop the zoning districts for Park County. Suggests that a zoning district changed to GR five wouldn't be suitable. We talked about the property, of course, currently is in RH. And what RH allows, however, that the applicant intends to subdivide the property. And it's 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 it appears to be extremely expensive to annex into the city of Cody. And we also mentioned that our land use plan designate this area as conditionally suitable for five acre lot sizes. And the GR five zoning district allows moderate intensity land uses. In GR five, the average minimum lot size will be five acres. And then finally, Madam Chair, we recommend um approval of a zoning map amendment that would rezone this fifty point four six acre parcel from RH to GR five zoning district. So that we essentially recommend approval of this zoning map amendment. We're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Yeah, I've got a quick hypothetical question here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one of the first times I've ever seen a piece of land that they want to increase the lot size rather than decrease the lot size. So my question is, if the ma- if the map amendment is approved and it goes GR five, somewhere down the future, all that's annexed into the city, what happens? Do they ha- do they state GR five or then it becomes jurisdiction of the city?
If it's annexed into the city, yeah, um Madam Chair, Richard told it. Yeah, my understanding is if it's annexed into the city, then of course, our zoning district goes away. And it's it's whatever the city requires.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this time?
Just a quick question. The um suitable for five acre or lot larger, not suitable for five acre or larger, but suitable to the five acre was so you got the five acres right there, and it falls into both categories then, right?
Yeah, it's and yeah.
So I guess we could change that.
Yeah, and that I don't know if that was a mistake on our part or if that was uh something in the land use plan.
Yeah, it was.
Written that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it does fall in both categories.
Yeah, it it should, yeah, and I suppose, you know, our new land use plan, we do something like that.
One maybe or?
We would have said larger. We should have, we should have said larger than five acres, but yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions at this time for the commissioners? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. Um if there are public comments, we would ask that you stand and state your name for the record, please. Are there public comments? Let's go here first. Okay?
Um, Joe Loosworth.
Okay.
I live in the property to the northeast or south northeast.
Okay.
And me and my wife are always lived here since ninety one. Lady, you're living, Dr. There. Above us.
Yeah.
No?
My brother's brother.
Who?
My brother's brother.
Oh, okay, your brother's property. Anyway, since ninety one, we've had that pretty well open.
Mm hmm.
And enjoyable. And we know that a person has the right to buy land and develop it and try to make a buck off. But we're concerned about Holly Road to one place.
Mm hmm.
Okay, that's the access. And that was right by my house. And we got all those Ford trailers from the police service. Going up and down that road, and they make a lot of noise. And a lot of dust. And we're a little bit concerned about the increased traffic. Now, we're only talking maybe what, forty fifteen park, but then you got visitors. And other people that might be going up to this property. And you know, the traffic at Holly Road is a dirt road, and it's maybe a little bit bigger than one lane. And getting by, you know, if you got traffic next to each other. You got a irrigation ditch on one side. And a drop off on the other. And be susceptible to, you know, traffic accidents, especially some of these people that go nine hundred miles an hour. And they're not new, but you can turn big trucks and one one. Anyway, we're concerned about that, along with the other uh people that border Holly Road. You know, because, well, the people that live next to Holly Road, we have an irrigation ditch. And if somebody lost a tow of their vehicle, they're gonna end up in the ditch or upside down. Because of angels. Anyway, about uh the traffic, is that Holly Road gonna be lightened?
Um sir, we can't really answer that in this process, um to my understanding, because this is a zoning change. If the zoning change is approved, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, then we would get into the subdivision process with the with the owner. And at that time, road access, road width, traffic counts, and all those things are taken into consideration by Public Works. And looked at whether there is a road agreement for maintenance, and all those things come in during the subdivision, right? That comes in during the subdivision approval process, not this zoning change process.
Placing up the game.
Kind of, yeah. This has to happen before the subdivision process does.
Just a point of verification, though, is if if we don't, if it's not changed. It could, this that property could be cut down into half acre lots. Right now, if it's changed, there's only, they're five acre lots, so.
Well, there's a potential, you've got the two seven acre locks, at least according to this map.
But your traffic could be much higher if this is changed.
Okay, that vacant area behind these two lots, they'll be subject in the future to more development.
Good.
Possible.
You know, and one of the things that we've always been taught was looking out our back door, we got skirt on right there, and we got empty land and water thing. When they put up a water cane, something like that, well, that was a mess. At least we really can't see them anymore.
This would make it a lot less dense than it could be if we don't do it.
Yes, I I fully understand the effect of the potential for further development here. Uh whether I live that long or not, I don't know. I'm hoping that it doesn't develop until after I die. You know, and I don't care. And it uh
Okay.
A little worried about traffic and then the construction. I know they're gonna have to bring in Gary for them. And that land is is rough. And then our irrigation water run rate. You know, on the edge of that property.
And that'll all have to be addressed if there's a subdivision application that comes in.
Okay.
So.
So right now is this meeting, and there's just a uh to approve these two parcels. Now, is that for single residence?
This is just a the zoning change.
Yeah, the zoning law, and it's two residential.
It no, it doesn't change parcels at all. All it does is takes that piece of ground and makes it GR five instead of the ability to go down to half acre lots.
All right, so when are they gonna talk about what might be constructed?
That would be later if the applicant does a subdivision application, and we have no control over when that may or may not happen.
Seven eleven.
No, no, it's not commercial. We're not going, we're not talking about commercial, but there could be another process in the future, but adjacent landowners again would be notified if an application comes in.
Uh for the zoning and whatnot, uh it involves Holly Road. What about that?
The treatment plant?
It's paved already.
Aqua Via is, but it has a gate on it too, at their property, so I'm not sure about use. That would come into play later. We we can't answer that right now. Those questions haven't been asked until there's an application for some kind of development, and we don't have that at this point.
You know, I often wondered why the uh, you know, the foresters is taking pretty horses there. And they're using Holly Road to cash in.
Right.
And they got their paved road right next to them.
I'm not sure how that's set up.
I mean, is it, does they have landlines or?
That's not in our purview at this point, so. Okay.
I'm new to this, so I don't really understand all this, but I don't know. I guess when they decide, you know, if you guys approve it, then you know, build on it.
You'll be notified.
Then I'll be back.
Okay.
That will be up to um when the owners decide how they want to subdivide at that point. There will be a notification put out, and you can attend the planning and zoning meeting, uh which you're concerned about.
I just said we are concerned about this.
Okay.
And.
We we do need to keep moving here. We have other public hearings coming up, so I appreciate your comments, and you'll be notified if it moves forward.
Thanks for sending me the notification.
Um we did have another public comment?
Thank you.
Uh yeah, I just wanted to say from representing the neighbors.
Uh huh.
Representing the uh representing the Bootbala, which it wasn't going to mention that, but we are your neighbors too. And we support this application. I think it's good use to have fewer traffic and more wider space for possibly worse people, which we're all about. The other thing I wanted to mention is uh we as a club have had a conversation uh with the applicant, and there is a discrepancy, so you guys know, this speaks to the road. There's a discrepancy in the property line that, I mean, it goes way back to where they didn't hit it right, and so the fence, whole fence is off. And with that said, we have verbally said, hey, we'll work with you because they're gonna have to either move the fence in the back or we might be able to give them that amount of land to enlarge the size of the road.
Hmm.
Just so you're aware of that, and and you've, you know, had that conversation because the road could be an issue, but that could be a reservation. I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I probably just thought I don't know protocol or procedures here or reading topics.
If you just state your name for the record, please.
Ten beside, anyone like the air homeowners in the Chugwater Rims area on the other side of South Fork. Uh one of our major concerns is, uh no one has mentioned any type of logical study with regard to uh develop, potential development of this property. If uh the city of Cody, as I understand, does not have an interest at this time in annexing it, there would be no city sewer or water. Which means that a subdivision would have to either have wells or systems. I was going to ask a question with regard to if a hydrologist study has been done, I saw him mention that it's a documentary. The second question is with regard to irrigation of that. Uh Chugwater Rims currently gets its water for irrigation from the eighty half ditch extension. Uh, does the change in zoning affect the uh draw of irrigation water? This is a proper, thank you.
Um my understanding is it would not change anything to do with the irrigation district, that that may or may not come up in conversations with future development or subdivision, but the zoning. But the zoning change does not change that. And hydrological, there's no requirement to do that for a zoning change at this time. And again, the the current property is allowed to go down to half acre sites, which would be a whole lot more issue. But that's one of the reasons they're trying to change is because that half acre would require public water and public sewer, going to the five acre minimum. They don't have to have that requirement. So I'm sure that will, there will be a discussion about potable water if the subdivision process comes to play.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, associates, uh I want to clarify a little bit what Kim talked about, city. Um we have talked, we've had conversations with city Cody. And yes, their water tank is right above the property, so there is not adequate pressure on part of this property. So they said, they said they wouldn't be able to serve some of this if it turns into a subdivision. Or that, which is causing a problem with the RH zoning. And the second one is, it would, if they got zoned into the city, it'd be corner, it would be a checker art thing, kitty corner. And so then you guys would get a discuss if we could do corner hopping, hopping in Park County. So that was another issue of why. No, we haven't done a hydrology study yet, um and where this gentleman was getting a little confused. Yeah, we put a, we put in an application for a simple subdivision if this got approved. And that's where he's seen the two lot thing at. But yeah, the whole intent of this is that RH is very complicated to be bringing in. City utilities when there's, the cost is involved and the location and everything else and what the city can and can't provide. So that is why we're looking at doing less acres or less lots.
Okay, any other public comments?
I'm sure I'll move a vote publicly.
They moved and seconded to close the public hearing, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna recuse myself voting on this to a family member who owns a property adjacent to it.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Um Commissioner Livingston is recused from the vote. So what is the pleasure of the remaining commissioners?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the zoning change as written.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
That included the staff requirement there.
There really isn't any. Yet we didn't have any.
Okay, I have a motion to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Joe, did you vote? I couldn't hear you. Joe, did you vote? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You got a three minute break. No, we got, we got started late. That was my fault. Yeah, I'm sure you will. Well, there's. Thanks. How are you? Lisa, you can come on up to the table if you want, please. I'm sure they'll get back here shortly.
Well, I meant to ask you, when did you get those people off the everybody to treat the buffalo?
Well, we just kind of went to uh Wednesday morning and we split. Uh people, some people, some of them went out early morning to a bike ride and others went. And when we got Matt, we were supposed to have a discussion from. So we decided to uh. And so that group was able to go look at the. I didn't want to do that because it's really off, but. We didn't have, I mean, we don't, I was already missing half last time. She sent me some pictures.
Okay, thank you. Hey, next up on our agenda, Lisa German, Executive Director of Crisis Intervention Services for a grant discussion.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me the time on your agenda. Um. Well, I've got lots to share with you, more than I thought I would have. The Community Development Authority, the Wyoming Community Development Authority. Um took over the Community Development Block Grant Funds um a year ago. And so we're no longer going through the Business Council. Um they are doing things. Uh a bit differently than the Wyoming Business Council did. So if you look at this um this handout. With uh attachment A, available funding. There are several Community Development Block Grants. Uh one from twenty twenty. And then the Community Development Block Grant Cares, which is COVID money from twenty twenty. And then another twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant and another one in twenty-two for a total of um. Eleven million, well, fourteen million when you include it all together. Um so. I went to a training in Casper and they discussed. All of these grants and basically there's just all of the community development, regular community development block grant is one grant. And then the COVID uh that cares COVID money is a separate. Separate pot and they discussed both pots of money with us. Um and the last page of this handout. I um separated out the timelines and what uh what each project entails. And I presented this to my Board of Directors and we went through it step by step. And we decided to apply for the cares money um rather than the regular Community Development Block Grant money. Um, what the Wyoming uh Community Development Authority has said is the cares money. Can be applied by nonprofits directly to them. Um so we don't need the county to sponsor this particular grant. If we fail in this grant, we will be back to have you sponsor a regular Community Development Block Grant down the line. Uh but the timeframe on this one is incredibly short. So we've been working with Plan One Architects to to do some renderings for us and I gave you that copy there. Um, of how this will work. Um, this grant, whether it's the regular Community Development Block Grant Funds or the COVID money. Either one of these grants only pays for renovations of existing buildings. It does not pay for a new shelter for Cody. But in February, they're going to release. Some American Rescue Plan money called Home ARP Funds. And that grant um I can write to. Build the non-congregate shelter space for the second half of this project. So it'll be two two grants, but this grant that I'm dealing with now. Just renovates our current facility at twelve twenty, twelve twenty-six thirteenth street. And so we're going to, it will no longer be a duplex, take out a staircase. Uh combine the entire downstairs space um. And renovate, of course, the kitchens and the bathrooms. So that there's a a number of things that we can't do in Cody right now. Um we can't do um. Support groups in Cody because the space is not ADA compliant. Uh and we can't do the supervised visitation and custody exchange because we just don't have the room for it and it's not ADA compliant. So those two things, Co- Cody people will no longer have to drive to Powell for those services. Um, so we can do supervised visitations and we can also do support groups in Cody. Once this building is renovated and we'll have more office space for meeting rooms um. And and eventually hopefully more staff down the road. Um so and and then the, finally, the facility will be ADA compliant. If you drive by it, you can see that we really are in desperate need of of new siding too. It's looking pretty bad. So um that's, and then, so the letter of intent I nailed off this morning. It's due uh September thirty-first, if you look at the left-hand side of this column. Um. We are going, our renovation is going to cost four hundred eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars. Uh Plan One has started the architectural drawings. Uh the letter of intent has been sent off. It's due by the thirty-first of this month. Application is due um by October thirty-first, so I'll be getting that done. And then they are going to approve this funding in December. Um. My, and I also talked to the Cody Enterprise this morning and they are publishing the um. The ad for the hearing in the legal notices. Uh it'll be published on next Tuesday's paper, September thirteenth. And Crisis Intervention will hold the first public meeting for this in the vacant side of our building at twelve twenty-six thirteenth street. On October seventeenth noon and so, of course, you are all welcome to attend that. We'd love to have you there. Um then the second hearing will publish um by October twenty-seventh. And hold the second meeting in November. Because we need to start the renovation as soon as possible in January. Because this money, this COVID money has to be spent by all four million of that. COVID money has to be spent by Wyoming by August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So I know, it's crazy. Uh it's very short. But all of our renovations, except for putting the siding on the outside of the building, are gonna be, it's gonna, all gonna be work indoors. So it'll be dead of winter. Um and uh Ron Yant from Plan One has. Uh made a few phone calls and and said. Anybody, you know, would be interested in bidding on this because of course Davis Bacon. Um and then also um. Uh, it's such a short time period, would you be able to get this done? And he's gotten a few yeses, we'll, we will definitely be bidding and yes, we could get this done. So we're going for it um. Because we've been trying to do this, as you know, for a number of years. And at that meeting in Casper that I attended, they were just begging people to apply for this COVID money to get it spent by. Uh August thirty-first of twenty-three, so um. We decided to do it uh and to see what we can accomplish in a very short amount of time. But um, one of the things with the COVID grant is you have to prove that it's COVID related, so I included our statistics. Um and that'll of course be part of the grant showing the um. Incredible jump in um shelter stays. From a hundred and fifty bed days in twenty twenty-two to one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight bed days. In uh or twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, so it's quite the jump. Uh something like nineteen hundred percent increase in shelter bed days. And um, I I think we can get lots of supporting information on that. Even I'm gonna have realtors write me letters about, you know, the housing market and all of the little houses. That were rentals are now verbos or they were sold. And um you know, as we know, housing has become quite the issue in Park County. So um it's all COVID related, so I I don't have, think we'll have any problem proving this project. Is COVID related, giving us more space for ADA complacency and. To be able to, because capacity building is also part of this grant. And that to expand our capacity to provide more services in Cody and not make Cody drive to Powell or Powell drive to Cody. Um it's very helpful if we can do that. Um. And let's see, it seems like, oh, and then I also just included a copy of my um. Case statement that'll become part of the grant. It explains the need for the project. We've got uh three case scenarios of different uh clients that we worked with um. And then it goes into our need for this project um and the impact that it'll have. So, you know, little light bedtime reading. But I just wanted to let let you see that we're, I'm already working on this grant. Even before the RFP has been released. Yeah, so I really think that we're, we're really in a good position to get this grant. They want shovel-ready projects and with, you know, renderings and architectural drawings. And everything ready to go ASAP. Um I think we'll be in really good shape to get this grant, so. Oh, and I forgot to introduce my Luke, this is Luke Hopkins, he's my, one of my board members and he's gonna be our, our uh. Sort of project manager, building manager overseeing, because I know zero about construction and he does, he knows about construction. So um, I don't know if I even have you know. Oh, uh yeah, it'll definitely increase office space uh because at some point, when um in February. When I write the Home ARP Grant, the uh American Rescue Plan Grant to build the shelter part. You know, I wanna have uh, there's also going to be a capacity building grant in there as well. For extra staff, so I'm hoping to be able to hire one, at least one person, maybe even two. So we can have a supervised visitation and exchange coordinator. Um and you know, just another advocate in the Cody office. Oh, and then, yes, the last thing, temporary office space. While this project is happening from January to August. Um. Uh, my Cody, I have one Cody staff person and then myself. And I was wondering two things, a letter of support from you guys so I can conclude with grant. And then also, um if there's any way we could get donated office space, Cubby Hole somewhere in Marathon Building. Um the Park County Complex um during that time so that clients can come see us there and meet us there. If not, uh I will be working remotely from Wopity and Darlene will be working uh from Cody. I mean, excuse me, from, she'd have to start commuting to Powell and then she would have to arrange to meet. Someplace, law enforcement center, hospital, library, McDonald's, I don't know, to meet with clients. Um during that time, so. I uh, we're gonna need some temporary office space if that's even a possibility. Um. If there's.
I don't know that, we're gonna have to check and see.
Like pay for our internet or what, you know, because we just use a cell phone through the Cody office these days. And then um the crisis line rings into Powell. So um we don't need to set up phone lines, but we would need internet, so.
Okay with that?
Yep.
We, if we can figure it out, we can talk to the buildings and grounds.
Okay, okay. Alrighty.
Um on board with the letter of support for the application?
Yeah, if I could, I got, I got one quick question. I'm not familiar with the term bootstrap client, what is?
Oh, bootstrap, that's our, just our term for emergency financial assistance. Where we're giving them food or clothing or gift certificates to the bargain box or helping them pay a utility. or helping them pay a utility or whatever. Yeah, yeah, that's what that is. That's just our term for emergency financial assistance. It's our bootstrap program.
And you're just looking for a letter of support for this particular thing?
Yeah, for this particular, and then I'll, I'll be back when I write the, uh, home ARP grant. Um, I'm pretty sure that one will work the same way, that I won't need to have you guys sponsor the grant or hold the public hearings. Um, but I'll let you know when we get to that point in February when they release those monies. But there, I'm gonna write two home ARP grants, one for the shelter and one for capacity building for staff.
Okay.
So.
Tell me we approve the letter of support for the second grant.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a letter of support for the application. Any further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And I'll get back with you on the office.
I had a quick question about your letter of intent.
Yes.
Due on September thirty-first?
Yeah, I already, I sent it in this morning.
Okay.
There's only thirty days.
Thirty-one, there's no thirty-one days.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry. Yeah, you know, I got thirty-first in my brain because the grant is due October thirty-first. Yeah, it's due at the end of September, but yeah.
It's covered if she's sending it anywhere.
It's covered anyways, because I sent it today. Yeah, I would hate to miss that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Sorry to introduce you right away. Trying to get in there quick because I didn't want to take up all your time.
No problem. Thank you. Hey, eleven oh-five, uh, Kim. It's the way my schedule's gone. I don't know. Some of those are pretty, pretty strict and some of mine.
During their golf tournament, Bunways, they came to me after I'd been drinking and nothing on their.
Good for you.
Damn that beer.
You gotta quit that stuff. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, Cedar Mountain View, uh, Minor Subdivision number fifty-eight. Final plat? Okay.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this project is Brett Tillery. This property is in a GR five zoning district. The planning area is the Lower South Fork. We did receive the final plat application on July thirteenth of this year, including payment and the draft final plat. Then we received a revised final plat on August sixteenth. That is shown in Figure One. The applicant requests approval of a minor subdivision create for ten point four one acre lot to be for residential use. As I mentioned, this is in the GR five zoning district. These lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. The ownership is, is Mr. and Mrs. Tillery. And you saw on Figure One, again, you saw that revised final plat showing, um, lots one, two, three, and four. Terms of location, it's shown in Figure Two, and this proposed subdivision is approximately seven miles southwest of Cody. It's on a parcel of land approximately point three miles north of Diamond Basin Road. The parcel has an address of thirty-nine Starview Drive. And on the south of this parcel is Kestrel Lane. On one side is a, a road called, or a drive called Foothill. And on the other one, um, Starview, those drives surround it and Kestrel Lane again on the south. In terms of neighboring land uses, you can see in Figure Three, the property is surrounded by residential, residential vacant and some agricultural, um, pieces. So a subdivision, DCI West is to the west. A subdivision, DCI East is to the east. There's a subdivision to the south and a subdivision to the southeast. Um, Figure Four shows a topo map of the property. It's relatively flat. This property is not within a mile of the municipality, so therefore municipal review is not required. Of course, this is a, a final plat review, which does not require a public hearing. We have received earlier written and verbal public comments. That occurred both, I believe, I, well, I remember at the P and Z Commission meeting and possibly at the sketch plan with the commissioners. But we've not received any new public comments and sketch print, plan approval. And the Board of County Commissioners reviewed and approved the sketch plan on September twentieth of last year with conditions. And I will just mention some of those conditions, Madam Chair, and I'm on page six of the staff report. The second condition that you approved was having that Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act have that note be on the final plat. That condition has been met. Another condition that you had was prior to final plat review by the board, the applicant shall provide a road maintenance and improvement agreement for the proposed subdivision lots. We have received draft agreement for each road. However, um, according to our understanding, neither one of those were sufficient, essentially because and I'll try to, I'll try to summarize and say it correctly. Um, it, it sounds like that draft, um, road agreement talks about the lot owner signing it. But of course, at this point, it, it would be, the owner would be Mr. Tillery. So we think those agreements that we have could be worded better. Also, Madam Chair, there is a Foothills HOA which does vaguely talk about um, addressing road maintenance. And perhaps, um, that would be, you might find that sufficient. We, I guess we didn't feel it was sufficient. Um, because it's, it's awfully vague. The, um, fourth condition, part of, of the prior to final plat review by the county commissioners. Applicants shall provide review and recommendations from Lakeview Irrigation District regarding the irrigation distribution plan. We do have an approved water distribution plan. And also, just kind of as a note, the district is also requiring the applicant to have an approved or get in place a Water Users Association. Plant Review Committee, that committee met on August fourth. They reviewed, of course, the final plat. There were some corrections and changes to make. Then we did get a revised version of the final plat on August sixteen. Bottom of page six, we have submissions for final plant review. Page seven, we have staff findings. On the bottom of page eight of our staff report, we do recommend approval of this final plat. We do have some conditions we're recommending if you, if you choose to approve. The first one is the applicant shall provide evidence that the Foothills HOA satisfies the subdivision lots participating in road maintenance for Foothill Drive and Starview Drive. Or the applicant shall provide a final road maintenance agreement or agreements to our office prior to recording of the final plat. Number two is the applicant shall comply with the requirements of Lakeview Irrigation District include in, to include implementation of a Water Users Association. Number three is the applicant shall provide the final mylar plat to the Planning and Zoning Department to be reviewed and signed by the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Number four, once the other conditions have been sufficiently met, the applicant in the presence of a member in the Planning and Zoning Department staff shall record all applicable required final plat submissions in the office of the County Clerk and Recorder. And then this will constitute release of the lots in the development for sale. And five, the applicant shall comply, shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the Minimum Subdivision Requirements that set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen five three oh six. We're happy to answer questions. Should you have any, Madam Chair?
Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes.
I guess I used to have a little bit of an issue with, with the condition number two that we are, we are requiring applicants to comply with the regulation with the, like, with an irrigation district. But that seems to me that it's not our place that they require them to comply with regulations from the district. I don't think we need to be the muscle is, I guess, what it comes down to. So that's, that's my call, like.
Well, and I don't know that we have any way to go back on it if they don't. It's not our control.
That's, that's where I'm, I think that, that condition should be a little.
Now, Jeff, if I could, I totally agree with you. I'm just wondering, in every one that we've done in the past, one of our requirements for subdivision is if they have water rights on the property, that they have an approved irrigation.
But we're saying we shall.
Yeah.
I'm saying we shall, we, we shall. That they, I agree that we asked that they have a, a water user plan. But we're saying they shall, will, shall comply with.
Comply with it.
And I just, I guess I don't like the wording in that.
I would agree, taking it up.
Condition number two.
I think, I don't, I don't disagree that we probably should have something in there that they need to, they should seek it. They should, you know, do it, but it, we're, it puts us in a position that if they don't comply, we're supposed to be doing something, the way I read that. Because we say they shall, and if they don't, if they don't, then what's our recourse?
I would agree.
I don't want to be complicit with, like, with an irrigation district on anything, so.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner Larry St. Harris. I, I mean, how far do you want this to go? Because you're also doing the same wording on the HOA agreement or maintenance agreement. Hey, so I is aren't legal entities, however, the Lakeview Irrigation District is. There's a little bit difference in control and, um, in my world.
But it still puts us saying you shall.
It, it does in that situation because the other is not necessarily a formal situation where Lakeview Irrigation District is definitely a formal situation.
Madam Chair, with us, we're saying you shall have an HOA. We're not saying you shall comply with everything in that.
You shall satisfy.
That's by the subdivision lot participating in.
Yeah.
Oh, and I, and I think in our regulations that, that states that if there are shared improvements that they're required to have an HOA, that might be a difference too. That they're required to have one, not us, that we, of course, we don't enforce it.
All right.
And that's, well, the way I read condition number two is if we, if they don't comply with the requirements of Lakeview. We're supposed to do something about it. And then the irrigation district is the one that has supremacy over what happens with the water, not us. That's my position on that one.
Oh, I agree. Pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve with the removal of condition number two.
Second. They moved and seconded to approve the final plat, Cedar Mountain Minor Sub, removing condition number two. Any further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor?
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, then it, I guess it's not a, a public hearing, so we can move ahead, Kim.
Okay.
With, um, Cottonwood Homes Minor or something. Yeah, one of these today is, it's Minor Subdivision number sixty-seven.
Yes, all right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is also a final plat review for Cottonwood Homes Minor Subdivision MS sixty-seven. The applicant is Julie Farconi. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Cody Powell Rule. We did receive a final plat application on July twenty-first of this year, including payment and the final plat. We received a revised final plat on August sixteenth. You see that in Figure One. The requested, um, approval is, of course, for this final plat. And it will be a partial vacation, a re-subdivision of Lot One of the Harrington Simple Subdivision two-ten. It, this will be, should you approve it, a three-lot subdivision. One lot will be seven point four eight acres, one lot will be five point six eight acres, and one lot will be one point three three acres, all for residential use. As I mentioned, this is in GRP and these lot sizes are consistent with that zoning district. The legal description currently is this property is Lot One of the Harrington Simple Subdivision. And again, that, that revised final plat is shown in Figure One. The location of the property, it's shown in Figure Two. It's approximately three miles southwest of Powell. It's on the northeast corner of Road thirteen and Lane eleven and a half. It's just, um, a little bit south of Road fourteen A. Terms of neighboring land uses, you can see in Figure Three that the neighboring uses are really a mixture of agriculture and residential. Terms of site characteristic, proposed lot one is developed and has an existing residence. It has some outbuildings and existing pasture. Proposed lot two is vacant and irrigated. Proposed lot three is developed. It has an, an existing residential structure and has an active special use permit. And that is for, uh, a group home, the Farconi Group Home, and that is SUP one fifty-five. Figure four, we have a topo map. The property is relatively flat. Property is not within a mile of any municipality. Public hearing notice is not required for final plat review. We've not received any public comments. Board of County Commissioners reviewed and approved the sketch plan on July nineteenth of this year. You had conditions. I will just briefly mention some of those. Number two was an, um, requiring an approved long-term noxious weed management plan. That condition has been met. Number three was a review and recommendations from the Shoshone Irrigation District regarding the water distribution plan. That condition has been met and there, there is now an approved water distribution plan. Number four was a note on the final plat saying further subdividing of any lot within this subdivision will require a forty-foot wide access and utility easement to serve lots two and three. That to be widened to sixty feet. That condition has been met. Number, the condition number five was a note on the final plat that any new accesses, um, approaches or improvements from Road thirteen or County Lane eleven and a half require a right-of-way permit from Public Works. And that condition has been met. And then number six was following approval, board approval of the sketch plan and prior to your approval of the final plat, the applicant shall submit an appropriate subdivision improvements agreement addressing all applicable, uh, improvements. Madam Chair, that condition is no longer applicable because the variance was granted by the county commissioners to waive the applicant's requirement to have gas go to each lot. So SIA is no longer required. Number seven was a draft HOA submitted to our department prior to today. That condition has been met. Number eight was a condition saying any proposed water wells on the subdivisions be permitted by the, the Wyoming State Engineers Office. That condition has been met. And then number nine was a condition about having a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act on the final plat. That condition has been met. The Plant Review Committee met and reviewed this final plat on August fourth. There were corrections and changes identified. We did then receive a revised final plat, which you saw, it's in our staff report, that occurred on August, uh, sixteen. Rest of page seven is all the submissions that are required for final plat review. We have some findings. Madam Chair, we recommend approval of this final plat with three conditions. One is, one condition we're recommending is the applicant provide the final mylar plat to our department to be reviewed and signed by the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Number two is, once the final plat is signed by the Board Chair, the applicant in the presence of a member from our department shall record all final plat submissions, including but not limited to final plat, covenants, HOA, water distribution plan, weed management plan, notarized disclosure statement and water irrigation plan with the office of the County Clerk and Recorder. And then this will constitute release of the lots. And our third recommended condition is the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and Minimum Subdivision Requirements in Wyoming Statute eighteen five three oh six. We're happy to answer questions. Should you have any?
Any questions? Or staff? Okay.
To approve, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Including the staff recommendation.
They moved and seconded to approve. Including.
Yeah, I know.
Staff recommendations. Any further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor?
Aye. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Don't go anywhere.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, next one isn't a public hearing either, so we can keep going. Okay, next one isn't a public hearing either, so we can keep rolling. Um, as long as Kim's voice holds out here today. So we have the amended plat of Burris Trust, simple sub number thirty-four.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this project is Eric Lola. And I will mention that, so we're, since this is a partial vacation and second amended plat, we're talking about. Lot, currently Lot one-oh-two of the Burris Trust Simple Subdivision. And we're talking about an unplatted parcel just to the east. This property is all in the GRP zoning district and the planning area is Cody Powell Rule. We did receive an amended plat application on July eighteenth. Including payment and the amended plat and a copy of the second amended plat. And we did then receive a revised copy of the second amended plat. On August third, and that's what you see, Madam Chair, in figures one and two, is that revised copy. And this is, if I didn't mention it already, it is second amended plat. So the applicant requests approval of this. It's a second amended plat of the Burris Trust Simple Subdivision, Lot one-oh-two. Should this be approved, we will, it will be a vacation of Lot one-oh-two, which is seventeen acres. And it will configure Lot one-oh-two to create Lot two-oh-two, which will be twenty-six point five-eight acres. And this amendment will be facilitated by merging nine point five-eight acres. Of a thirty, just over a thirty-five acre unplatted parcel just to the east of Lot, current Lot one-oh-two. And again, those two things will be combined to create Lot two-oh-two. And then that, should this, this amended plat be approved. That unplatted parcel will go down to twenty-five point five-two acres. And proposed Lot two-oh-two is going to be used for agricultural use. Burris Trust Simple Subdivision was approved in two thousand and four. The plat created a two-lot simple, Lot one was ten point seven-five acres, Lot two was ten acres. In two thousand and seven, the Burris Trust simple was amended to create Lot one-oh-one. Three point seven-five acres and Lot one-oh-two was, was, uh, made seventeen acres. So originally, you had two lots that were almost identical in size. With that first amended, Lot one was, was reduced in size, Lot two was made much bigger. Ownership, um, Lot one-oh-two is owned by Mr. Luthy. Um, and the unplatted parcel is owned by Eric and Luann Lola. Location is shown in figure three. They're approximately half a mile west of Highway two ninety-four and approximately two miles north of the intersection. Of Highway two ninety-four and Highway fourteen A. So again, Madam Chair, you, when you look at, when you look at, I'm sorry, um, when you look at figure three. In red, we have both the, the lot and the unplatted parcel. The lot is that, um, ag portion kind of to the northwest. The unplatted parcel is that long, narrow piece going north and south. Terms of site characteristics. As I mentioned already, current Lot one-oh-two is undeveloped ag land. The unplatted partial land to be merged with one or two is also ag land. And there's a bit of a decline in elevation, you can see that in figure four. And particularly in the middle of the unplatted parcel, um, there's, there's just kind of a dip in that land. And I, you know, we, we feel it's probably a drainage area. And it's not, that middle portion of the unplatted parcel is not an ag production. In terms of neighboring land use. Current use, as I mentioned, of Lot one-oh-two is ag. The unplatted part of, or the part of the unplatted parcel to be merged with one or two is also, um, is also ag land. And, um, and you can see in figure five, ag land on the north side of this property. Some ag land on the south and not ag land, non-ag, non-ag land in the middle. As I mentioned, this property is in the GRP zoning district. This new lot size that will be created is consistent with that zoning district. Of course, this is a parcel vacation and an amended plat. And this is for adjusting the boundary line between a platted lot and an unplatted parcel. The amended plat process, of course, we have a fee, we require the amended plat. We, we received that amended plat on July eighteenth. The Planning Director determined that no public hearing is necessary. Because she feels like, should this be approved, neighboring land use, uh, neighboring landowners will not be compromised. No, this was, again, no public hearing, so there was no notice associated with it, we did. We did reach out to relevant agencies. The Fire Protection District One responded, they said they would be able to provide fire protection. The Irrigation District responded, they said they reviewed a water distribution plan. And that will be further reviewed by their directors or by their commissioners on September thirteenth. Public Works responded, they have no comments or concerns. Treasurer's Office responded. That said that property taxes are paid in full for twenty-twenty-one. And I believe, if I remember, I believe that's just for the current lots, likely. Or is it for the unplatted, do you remember?
No.
Um, anyhow, whatever, whatever they commented on, they said taxes were paid. Wyoming Game and Fish responded, they said they have no wildlife, um, comments. Terms of overlay district, these lands are in an ag overlay district. And that gives you, the county commissioners, if you choose. An opportunity to make conditions if you think that. If you approve this, if you think approving this will, that lot will impact ag. Or you can make conditions affecting this lot if you think that ag will somehow impact it. Well, our conclusion is the proposed amended plat does not appear to impact any neighboring ag operations or activities. And we also believe that these landowners are aware of ag operations occurring in the neighborhood. And the, all the land to be merged is in ag production currently. We've received no public comments, Plat Review Committee looked at this on August first, there were some changes. We received a revised amended plat on August third. And again, you can see that in figures one and two. Page nine of our staff report, we have the amended plat process. And we have here the name, you know, the plat is what the plat is called now, the title. The vacated portion of plat has a single owner, we do have certificate on the final plat for their signatures. We have some findings of fact that you had a chance to look at. Madam Chair, we recommend approval of the second amended plat of Burris Trust Simple Subdivision thirty-four. Following conditions, one is the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities. And special districts, irrigation districts, or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility show be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. No case so any utility easement be less than twenty feet width, and easements must be identified on the final plat. And number two, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in Park County Development Regulations. And subdivision requirements in Wyoming Statute eighteen-five-three-oh-six. And we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
One question to start with, um, you have any report that Hart Mountain Irrigation District. Since they've preliminary reviewed the water distribution plan, the plan will be reviewed by the district's commissioners on September thirteenth. So if we were to approve this amended plat today, what happens if Hart Mountain Irrigation comes back with something a little different, or they don't approve the plat? Where are we at?
That would, um, my, my, my guess is because I believe we require a water distribution plan to be submitted with this. And so, should you approve this today? We would, I, my guess is we would not have any mo- we would not ask you to sign that Mylar until we get that water distribution plan. Does that sound, does that sound appropriate?
Any other questions, Commissioners?
However, maybe that should be added.
I was just thinking, do we want to make that a condition of the, the Hart Mountains Water Distribution Plan is? Received.
Including one of the requirements and approved water distribution plan.
Nothing's changing, Madam Chair.
Not really, but that's. Right, it's just the dates don't match, and that's why I was trying to make sure that we could track it. Okay, I have a motion in a second. We just don't have it yet.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I have a motion in a second for approval, uh, with the one. Added condition, however, we make it happen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Madam Chair, you're ahead of schedule, but if you want to continue without me.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve.
Don't doubt it, man. Okay, we're gonna keep moving, the next one is not a public hearing either, so we will have Kim and Jenny. Okay. Um, this would be the amended plat of Shining Mountain.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this proposal is Matt Cook. And this property is in a GR twenty zoning district, the planning area is Clark. And we have really three lots that we're talking about. So one is Lot twenty-six, and when you look on the, the amended plat. That is shown as basically will become, if this is approved, it will become Lot one-twenty-six. And also it's Lot twenty-seven, which is excluding the south three hundred feet. That portion will become Lot one-twenty-seven, again, if you're looking at the amended plat, should this be approved? And then the, the third piece of property is really, um. Defined as or described as the south three hundred feet of Lot twenty-seven. And should this be approved, that will become Lot two-twenty-seven. So those are the three pieces that we're looking at. Matt Cook submitted an amended plat application to us on July eighteenth, including payment and this amended plat. Then we received a revised amended plat on August tenth, and that's what you see in figure one. The applicant requests approval of this partial vacation, and it will be the fifth amended plat for this. Shining Mountain subdivision, and specifically, we're talking about. What has been described as lots twenty-six and twenty-seven. And result of this approval will be the vacation of Lot twenty-six and the vacation of original Lot twenty-seven. Creation of Lot one-twenty-six, which will be seventeen point four-one acres. Lot one-twenty-seven, which will be eight and a half acres. And Lot two-twenty-seven, which will be four point six-five acres. And these lots will continue to be for residential a, or, and or ag use. And the original plat for Shining Mountain subdivision was approved in nineteen seventy by the Board of County Commissioners. And that plat approved thirty-six lots, there have been four amended plats and several lot line adjustments since then. Um, Madam Chair, just for, for the record and to note, on. In, in May of nineteen seventy-seven, a portion of Lot twenty-seven was conveyed by warranty deed. This warranty deed exempted the south three hundred feet of Lot twenty-seven and, and reserved a perpetual right-of-way easement. Across, uh, over and along and across the west twenty feet of Settleup for Utilities and E, E, Ingress and Egress. At the time, neither an amended plat nor record of survey was filed with the division of this lot. And that resulted in complicated lot descriptions, which we feel would further be complicated by the proposed amendment. So, Madam Chair, what happened was in seventy-seven, Lot two-twenty, I'm sorry. The, the south three hundred feet of Lot twenty-seven was created by deed. Lot twenty-seven, excluding the south three hundred feet, was, was created by deed. But neither of these were created by plat or by a record of survey, so we're, we're trying to rectify that. So that's why you see Lot one-twenty-seven and two-twenty-seven. Um, again, they've, it's been described that way. And one other thing I want you to, to notice, you had a chance to see this amended plat. What also what this does is, when you look at proposed Lot two-twenty-seven. There's a three hundred long strip of property that's ten feet, uh, wide. That is currently in Lot twenty-six, that is to be added to proposed Lot two-twenty-seven. That is to rectify the fact that there's a lot line that goes through at least one structure. On that, um, southern half, southern part of Lot twenty-seven. So that's another thing that this amended plat is trying to correct. Is that, is that, okay. And so, Madam Chair, ownership, so current Lot twenty-six, that's owned by the, the Bingstons. Lot twenty-seven, except the south three hundred feet, that's owned by the Yorks. And the south three hundred feet of Lot twenty-seven, that property is owned by the Cooks. So those are all the, the ownership of these three different pieces. Shining Mountain subdivision is, again, it's, it's, legal description is Lot twenty-six and Lot twenty-seven. The location, it's shown in figure two, located just south of Shining Mountain Road. And a little bit further south of County Road eight U D, north of County Road eight B C. Of course, this is all in the Clark area, and this subdivision is approximately four and a half miles west of Highway one-twenty. And you can see, again, you can see the location, um, and those ownerships in figure two. Figure three shows a topo map of the property, current use of the property is residential and agriculture. The proposed lots, all three of these are all developed, each has a residence and some contain other accessory structures. Gentle decline in elevation going west to east. And Shining Mountain Road borders two of the proposed lots on the immediate north. Terms of neighboring land uses. Primarily residential agriculture and residential vacant. And that's shown in figure four, as I mentioned, this is located in, in a GR twenty zoning district. And again, uh, um, I, I already mentioned this, but I'll say it again, proposed Lot two-twenty-seven will now include. A ten-foot by three-hundred-foot portion of original Lot twenty-six. To ensure that an existing structure is located completely on proposed Lot two-twenty-seven. Of course, this is a partial vacation and amended plat. In this case, a partial vacation is warranted because we're changing lot configurations in a platted subdivision. Amendment plat processes, we have a fee, of course, we have to receive the amended plat. Again, our Planning Director determined no public hearing is necessary. Because we don't feel like, should this be approved, that neighboring lot owners or landowners will be compromised. No public hearing, um, notice was required then in the paper, we did notify some agencies. We did notify depart, um, DEQ. They basically summarized notifications and permits that would be required. Regarding various activities, should they be necessary, that may impact surface or groundwater. Our County Treasurer was notified, park, uh, property taxes are all paid in full for twenty-twenty-one. Game and Fish was notified, they have no wildlife commons. Public Works, um, stated they have a question regarding legal access for Lot two-twenty-seven. And then we did confirm that legal access to Lot two-twenty-seven does exist. And I think, um, we received a comment back from Public Works. Indicating that they received that and they, they're fine with that notification. None of these lots are in an overlay district, we've not received any public comments. Our Plat Review Committee met on August first. They had some minor changes and corrections, but then we received a revised amended plat. They had some minor changes and corrections, but then we received a revised amended plat on August tenth of this year. And um and again, you know, we have a title for this. It'll be the fifth amended plat of Shining Mountain subdivisions. Or I'm sorry, Shining Mountain subdivision, lots twenty-six and twenty-seven. And again, uh amended lot twenty-six will be one twenty-six. Vacating uh original lot twenty-six. amended lot twenty-seven, excluding the south render feet, will be lot one twenty-seven. Vacating original lot twenty-seven. And the amended south three hundred feet of lot twenty-seven will be lot two twenty-seven. Again, vacating original lot twenty-seven. Uh, we have findings of fact. We recommend approval of this fifth amended plat. Madam Chair, we have one recommended condition, that is, the applicant shall comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wilmington statute eighteen five three oh six. And we're happy to we're happy to answer questions, should you have any?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah, just one quick question clarification. Uh, this is in G R twenty, right?
Yes.
But the lots are smaller than twenty acres, and the reason for that being is that subdivision was created before the updated.
Exactly, created, I believe, originally back in nineteen seventy-seven, so before we even had created GR twenty.
Seventy. Yeah, and that further split happened in seventy-seven, which was still before before it was really.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the original subdivision was seventy.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for staff?
Um, there I'll move it through.
Second.
With staff recommendation. With that.
All right. Let's move in second to approve the amended plat for Shining Mountain with the conditions as listed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And passive.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Twenty twenty-two ninety.
Same guy bought Bill all three of those houses.
We just keep moving.
He owned all of them.
Hmm.
And he split them. Because he built the next one.
We're trying to read it with extremely.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was almost like she was splitting. He was splitting or creating.
Close enough.
Close enough.
Okay.
I don't know, Lee might not let him start yet. Um, our one twenty is Tony Mong with Wildlife Biologist with the Wild and Game and Fish. With an update on mule deer populations and winter range.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for allowing me to speak today. It's a little bit of a change from the original topic. It's gonna go a little bit more broad today, rather than just focusing on one species that I hit. Have a broader topic. And before we get started, I gotta thank Arthur Middleton, his lab, his students.
It doesn't need fixed right now. We just wanted you to look at, see what's going on. Sorry about that, Tony.
Oh, okay.
Good, thanks.
Amy Fish's fault.
No, it's been, White Dog did it too, so.
State agents. All right, so anyways, big thanks to Arthur Middleton and his lab. Laura Gigliotti and Kristen Barker did a lot of work. Really, the kind of key pieces of information that I'm gonna share with you today, they put together. And did a lot of work because they think it's something important. This wasn't part of their research, it wasn't part of their, you know, graduation requirements. Just something that they were willing to help me out. So, the eternal question, why am I here? Lee has a few answers, I'm sure. But really, today, I wanted to commend you all for taking on, you know, the big task of really looking at land use planning within Park County and in an area that is diverse with different opinions and different thoughts, different uses, and a lot of, a lot of kind of intersecting things that are going on. And so I'm really here because of what you guys found and what you originally went out and said. What's important to Park County residents? And one of these that fell out is one of the top ones is protecting wildlife habitat in corridors. And with that, I'm assuming there doesn't say specifically, but wildlife is a big deal to those in Park County. And we can see that importance, not even, not here, but also not only for our residents of Park County. We'd like to go out and view wildlife and interact with wildlife. But the millions and millions upon millions of people that come into Park County and enter Yellowstone or... I don't have a graph here on numbers for hunters, but large numbers of hunters are also fully engaged with the wildlife and with Park County in that way. So it's not just the case of the residents wanting to see these animals around, but also them gaining monetary benefit from what occurs in there around Park. So what I'm here to do is hopefully to kind of pique your interest in regards to how we can take wildlife information, what wildlife information do we have? And how can we, between myself, the game and fish, our partners? And how can we use that wisely moving forward to make wise decisions on development? To hopefully decrease or minimize impacts to a resource that we all love, but also has a big impact on the residents of Park County? So today, what I wanted to do was just kind of walk you through, what kind of information do we have? What do I have to share with you today? And this is gonna be big picture stuff. And how are animals, how are big game in the, in Park County, how are they using Park County? What does that look like, again, kind of the thirty thousand foot view? And then also, we've done a little bit of looking at what's changed over the last thirty to forty years as far as how have humans been influencing these areas that they are using in Park County? And then finally, I wish I could just wrap it all up and give you guys a bullet statement of how we can all get along, but that's not really what's gonna happen, so you'll see when we get there. So what kind of information do we have? We are very fortunate here in Park County that we've got a lot of different information, and some of that is really key in understanding movement of wildlife in and around Park County. So we have movement and collar data. Nearly a million or more points from different animals.
Close enough.
Close enough, okay. I don't know, Lee might not let him start yet. Our one twenty is Tony Mong with Wildlife Biologist with the Wild and Game and Fish. With an update on mule deer populations and winter range. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for allowing me to speak today. It's a little bit of a change. In the original topic, it's. Going to go a little bit more broad today, rather than just focusing on one species that I hit. Have a broader topic. And before we get started, I got to thank Arthur Middleton, his lab, his students.
It doesn't need fixed right now. We just wanted you to look at, see what's going on. Sorry about that, Tony.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
Amy Fish's fault.
No, it's been, White Dog did it too, so.
Alright, so anyways, big thanks to Arthur Middleton and his lab. Laura Jigliotti and Kristen Barker did a lot of work. And really, the kind of key pieces of information that I'm going to share with you today, they put together. And did a lot of work because they think it's something important. This wasn't part of their. Research, it wasn't part of their. You know, graduation requirements, just something that they were willing to help me out. So, the eternal question, why am I here? Lee has a few answers, I'm sure. But, really today, I wanted to commend you all for taking on. You know, the big task of really looking at land use planning. Within Park County and in an area that is diverse with different opinions and different thoughts. Different uses and a lot of. A lot of kind of intersecting things that are going on and, and so I'm really here. Because of what you guys found and what, what you originally went out and said, what, what's important to Park County residents? And one of these that fell out is one of the top ones is protecting wildlife habitat and corridors and. With that, I'm assuming there doesn't say specifically, but wildlife. Is a big deal to those in Park County. And we can see that importance, not even, not here, but also. And not only for our residents of Park County. Who like to go out, view wildlife and interact with wildlife. But the millions and millions upon millions of people that come into. Park County and inner Yellowstone or. I don't have a graph here on numbers for hunters, but large numbers of hunters are also. Fully engaged with the wildlife and with Park County in that way. So it's not just the case of the residents wanting to see these, these animals around. But also them gaining monetary benefit from what occurs in there around Park. So what I'm here to do is hopefully to kind of pique your interest in regards to. How we can take wildlife information, what wildlife information do we have? And how can we, between myself, the game and fish, our partners? And how can we use that wisely moving forward? To make wise decisions on development? To hopefully decrease or minimize impacts to a resource that. We all love, but also has a big impact on the, on the residents of Park County. So today, what I wanted to do. Was just kind of walk you through, what kind of information do we have? What do I have to share with you today? And this is going to be big picture stuff. And how are animals, how are big game in the, in Park County, how are they using Park County? What does that look like? Again, kind of the thirty thousand foot view. And then also, we've done a little bit of looking at what's changed over the last thirty to forty years as far as. How have humans been influencing these areas that they are using in Park County? And then finally, I wish I could just wrap it all up and give you guys a bullet statement of how we can all get along, but that's not really. What's going to happen. So you'll, you'll see when we get there. So what kind of information do we have? We, we are very fortunate here in Park County that we've got. A lot of different information and some of that is really key in understanding movement of wildlife. In and around Park, Park County. So we have movement and collar data. Nearly a million or more points from different animals. From ranging from two thousand and eight all the way to two thousand and twenty-one. We have collar, we have collared animals up in the high country. From bighorn sheep and mountain goat down to lowland country, pronghorn most recently. And so we've got a really pretty substantial set of data showing where these animals are moving. And with that, then we can take that information and use it to, to create these wildlife use overlays. To understand what areas might be important within, within the county. Now, on top of that, these collars, we don't have enough money to collar every single animal, so there are samples of animals. So with that, we also have our visual or classification data. That we either collect from the air using helicopters or from the ground in the case of. Mule deer, especially in the north and south fork areas, even up into the park sport. It's a really good, good sample, but it is a limited timeframe. We're looking at usually a, within a week or. Two of Thanksgiving during a time when, when most animals are available, at least for mule deer. Elk, we're looking at a few days in January. And then pronghorn, we're actually out in August doing those. But what it allows us to do is, is to look at these areas where maybe we don't have collar data. But we under, we know that there are animals that are using it, so put some more. Data on the ground. It gives us kind of a gut check on. What's being used, what's not being used and allows us to, to kind of use that as a, as a measure. Of what's going on. And then most recently, and this is the work that Kristen Barker really helped with was. How are, how things changed since about nineteen eighty-nine? That's where she was able to go back to as far as using. The information she had to look at what's changed in Park County and we're going to kind of dive into a specific area. But what's changed within? As far as land status goes from maybe open range, range land to buildings for. Converted type range. So we're gonna, we've got a little bit of that. Again, this is kind of the. The big overview, hopefully just to give you an idea of what kind of information is out there. Now, this is a really messy slide, but that is every point. That I have for elk, mule deer and pronghorn right now in the county. This does not have the mountain goats or the bighorn sheep on there. And now we've actually even outside of a TT there, we've even got some new data as well. But as you can say, see, you can look at that and pretty easily say, well, everything's important. But that's not helpful. Because you guys know that there are important areas and that Park County is important for wildlife. So what I asked Laura Jigliotti to do is, is kind of take this information. And use statistical analysis to try to understand. What areas are most important, what areas are maybe not as important? And kind of begin there and see what that looks like. And so when we do that, it, it does clean it up a little bit. So the map on the right. You'll see those kind of smaller polygons. I've got them broken into. Three different species and, and those are both, what I would call high and medium use. There is also a low use, but that basically takes into account all the points that you guys saw, so. If you look at just high use and medium use for each one of those species. You can see that we actually get down to a detail that might be helpful. When we start to look at, at certain areas. Kind of drilling in a little bit more, just to, to show kind of what this looks like. That buffalo bill there on the top right, so we've got the north and south fork. The kind of bluish or teal type colored polygons are actually elk. High and medium. The orange polygons are again, mule deer. And then the purple are, are prong. So, what this shows is that there is, there is some information that we've been able to glean and, and put out there. It allows us to kind of look. As an overlay, what, what is important on the landscape? And we've actually even taken and, and she's created a layer that takes all the species into account and does the same thing. It looks at these high use areas. And splits them out that way. So there's some really good information out there. There's some, some good utility that. As you're thinking about planning and what that looks like for the future. That might be able to be wrapped into some decision matrices or decision. Just decisions that you're making for future planning. And then I also just wanted to point out, if you look, kind of, if you follow the north fork up to the edge where the. Kind of Green Creek area is. Kind of around Copper Lake, you'll see that there's, there's nothing listed there as important for mule deer. But all of us living out there know that there are mule deer out there. Now that is because when we put collars on animals, we're typically using. Helicopters and that area is not very conducive where helicopter captures. And so that's why I said that we've got this on the ground classification information. That allows us to, to, to look at animals that are using these areas where we may not have collars. And so. The, the green dots indicate different groups of mule deer that we've classified from the ground. And we can start to use this, also inform some of those decisions. That, that we are making as, as we move forward. And of course, we all drive up and down the north fork and we, we know that there are mule deer using those. And so we can fill in some of that information with that. So, so with that, we've, we've got these overlays that I think could be really. Very important and very useful in making future decisions. When it comes to land management and. Planning and zoning and those types of things. So, the other piece of information that I wanted to talk about today is just the land use and development. And we're going to focus in on the Upper Shoshone Mule Deer Winter Range, which is. The north and south forks of the, of the Upper Shoshone. And those areas around there that are considered mule deer winter range. This data is gleaned from remote sensed data from the USGIS. This data uses what are called pixels, which are basically just squares on the ground. And these are thirty meter by thirty meter pixels. So what it does is remote sensing goes in and establishes based on. Different metrics of color and different. Metrics of what is put off by the ground and what they're able to sense. And it breaks it into different cover classes. And those cover classes are breaking it, broken down into these eight different kind of classes. Developed and proppeland is what we would consider to be. A human influenced land, land use. And so that's, that's what we focused on. The others are, you can see there are grass, trees, waters, wetland, ice snow and bare ground. So. It's, it's kind of a simple methodology, but it gets a. Kind of some of this bigger scale changes. Within here, she also kind of lists out buildings and that was done, actually, Microsoft. Went through in two thousand and twelve and did this for the entire country and, and remote sensed. Created what they believed based on the signatures from what they were getting from. Satellite imagery were buildings. Kristen, bless her heart, went through and actually hand digitized. These aerial images using, you know, using her. Computer and digitized each one of those buildings in, in twenty twenty-two. And so we can see a change. Of the number of buildings within at least one of these smaller areas. So just what that looks like kind of overall and. Little light in here, but we can see there is red as what we would. Considered converted for human use. And this goes through twenty twenty. And, and so what you see there is just the areas that have been converted from. Were previously some type of open range or, or open. Land converted to either some type of proppeland or actually developments, whether it's housing. Here's what it looks like with buildings in twenty twenty. With those on the landscape, right? So this is just to show you kind of what, what we have. And this is again, all overlays that, that we can put within our GIS and. And overlay this with animal use and, and other things to, to get at. Some really, I think, interesting information. So what does this look like on the landscape as far as change over time? Since nineteen eighty-nine, which I just. Just note here that in nineteen eighty-nine, we had about almost sixteen thousand acres. That were, had already been converted at that point in nineteen eighty-nine. And currently, we're sitting at about nine nineteen thousand acres. So thirty years, about, you know, thirty or three thousand acres have been. Converted from some type of open, open range into. Some type of human influenced landscape there. And just to note, we've had a couple of pretty steep increases in the early, in the early two thousands. We did see kind of a steep increase and then we've seen that, again, this is only through twenty twenty, so. You, you do live here, so you know, last couple of years have been fairly busy with, with this as well. But we've seen some steeper rates of change there in mule deer winter range. Just, just two photos. This is twenty-five years from nineteen ninety-four to. Whatever, what would that be? Three years ago. And. So what we're looking at here is, is Green Creek, the copper leaf development there. Just simply looking, you can see that there have been some major changes to that, to that mule deer range. Winter range and you see the housing. Conversion from kind of irrigated to, to more developed. Those type of things. So those are things that, that we were able to kind of glean from this and show. And again, this is just ninety-four to.
Why do you keep zooming in on that place?
Well, I was gonna, I didn't want to put a big bubble there, but. You see where Lee's living. But yeah, twenty years of, of change there in that Green Creek area. And then also eight years of, of building development, so. Twenty twelve, twelve is black. That's, that's the buildings that were there in twenty twelve and then in twenty twenty. You can see the yellow there and, and the development of buildings. What does this mean percent wise? Because that's kind of the way we measure. Impacts to winter range is looking at. Converted use as a percentage. And really, I mean, back in the, the late eighties, we were still. You know, in between six point eight, six point nine percent. Kind of impact to mule deer winter range, but we have climbed just a little bit above eight percent. A couple of these. Citations there that have been published in the last couple of years, looking at. Specifically mule deer and kind of focused on mule deer, but looking at. The way that they move through these landscapes and they use these landscapes, we do see impacts at, at as little as three percent. There's some variability there with those differences, but. Things that, that I think we need to keep in mind as, as we move forward with future planning. And just so you know, so the upper, I'm sure you're aware, but. Both the, on the left and the right, Upper Shoshone and the Park Sport Mule Deer Herd. Are both running below average or below our objective for where we'd like the herd to be. We have seen some increases in the last couple of years, but we are running well. Now, none of this is to say that. Everything is, is because of the development. That's not what I'm trying to imply. Life in the exhort, exhort of mountains is, is difficult for all species. You look at most of my trail camera pictures and I see their mouths are wide open. It's hard to, hard to live. Of course, we've got all the toothy critters out there as well. We have chronic wasting disease that is making impacts. We also see that chronic wasting. Disease rates increase in these areas where we have higher development, less hunting. More resident type birds that are kind of protected in these neighborhoods and their densities get higher. And then also just the ancillary impacts from more development, more cars equals more accidents. More properties equals more fencing and we've seen that fencing can have a, a negative impact. So what I'm here today is just to. Give you that information, but to say that I really believe that Park County. And, and all the United States, from what I've seen, has an opportunity to really place a new trail with. Development and, and making your plan. And incorporating some of this information that, that you have, that's important to the citizens of Park County and. Really the world. So what I'd suggest is, you know, an opportunity to work together. With some others to come up with some solutions or suggestions. To help us better share the landscape, whatever that looks like. I'd like to have a little bit more time with you. Maybe I've, I've heard that you guys have done workshops in the back, in the past. And I'd like a couple hours where we could sit down and really look at this information. We can look at the information we have, we can look at how best to apply that information. And hopefully together, come up with some solutions that, that we can provide to the plan or, or however you guys move forward on, on making decisions. I. Really like that time. It's. Lee knows that I can say a lot in twenty minutes and. Change minds, but that's not what I wanted to do today. I just wanted to put it out there and. And allow you to ask any questions or, or hopefully be able to. Spend some more time with you.
Um, just a question on, on. Changing, for instance, the mule deer corridor, maybe with a subdivision, does that lead? Automatically to its depredation of the herd or do they adapt some way of going around? Do they change at all?
Sure, yeah. And, and what Paul Sawyer's work is, and mainly, again, this is in the gas field. There hasn't been a lot of work done in the suburban, urban kind of problem, mule deer. But they will change their pattern of use. But if they were using that area, they were using it for a reason. It was probably the best they had around. What happens when we start to move them is we start to maybe put them into maybe areas that might not be as. Palatable or maybe not as nutritious and start to pack animals in. If they're avoiding an area and they're kind of congregating. That could lead to higher disease rates and also lead to. Overuse in, in some of these other winter ranges. And that's. Definitely something I've talked to our federal land managers about. It's like, hey, we just, we need to plan for. Animals that are going to be using more of the federal lands that are, that are open. Cause right now they're, they're kind of down on these farms, but yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure. So you know, I don't mind asking the tough questions. I'm completely, I'm not, this is a devil's advocate question. But a couple of different things. Are, are we seeing wildlife populations that are artificially high? Because of you're, you're trying to bring these populations up to keep a humble population, which obviously supports. The hunting public as well as money grubbing outfitters like me, but. Are we, are we creating an artificially high wildlife population and then asking? The folks around here to support them?
Sure.
That's one of the questions. The other thing is, is like in the north fork border, when you talk about the, the change in habitat. If you go back further, there wasn't all that agrarian agricultural use. It was just sagebrush. So. We created better habitat and now we're. Degrading that better habitat that we created.
Sure, yeah. And, and yeah, so to answer your first one, are we? I would ask you, you've been here longer than I have. I've heard that our populations aren't as poor as far as mule deer.
No, mule deer definitely not.
Right.
Elk, yes.
Elk, yeah, yeah. Elk's a whole nother story. There's a whole, I mean, cadre of issues with. I mean, you just looked at copper leaf, the elk moving in there and now those residents are, you know, unhappy with the elk and then. Disease as well, tricholysis. And then also damage.
But don't get me wrong, I'm not saying to do something. I'm just, that, that question's going to be asked by the public.
Absolutely. And I, I think in some cases, you know, we need to do a better job of, of kind of managing the, the people and the wildlife. How many? How much wildlife can we actually have on the landscape and, and you know, people be okay with it? I think there's, there's a little bit of that. And then your, your second question was, remind me, I have.
Well, as soon, like I said, if you look at the north fork corridor. I've been there, I've been there, I've been in the north for thirty-seven years and watched. They turn from fields to houses.
Yeah.
But at one point, you know, fields, you're providing a lot of, a lot of habitat on those fields.
Yeah.
Before the fields were there, it was sagebrush.
Sure.
Valley.
Yeah, I, I would just say that we don't, I don't think we have enough information to know whether. An irrigated meadow was better for a mule deer or not, right? And so. That's some of the things that I'd like to look into. When you look at recruitment. And in our areas, we have the lowest, some of the lowest recruitment in the state with mule deer and always have. You know, you look back. Early eighties, we were always ten to fifteen percent below. Whatever was happening in the state. So one, it's a tough place to live. Two, are these agriculture? Two, are these uh agricultural fields actually are, isn't it improvement? Or is it just some kind of uh false uh sense of security for the animals? And then it's just easy food, but is it better?
Yeah.
That would be the question. And and then it's it's better to have that open land, I think, than than not. Um, then they get pushed into the margins and again, deals these travel. So I I I really do, I I do think that there are solutions that we can come up with. It doesn't require anybody to say you can't do this on your private land. That's not what we're asking. We're just saying, can we make it a, you know, a big deal? Like, hey, you're gonna be building an area that's really important for wildlife. Here are some things that can maybe help help that, or here are some some options that, you know, maybe you decide to go somewhere else or do something. But I think, you know, I definitely think we can get it done in two hours.
As we um, as we move forward, I I don't know if you're familiar with the land use plan schedule. Um, certainly appreciate the information that you brought today. But we'll have um, we have the first week of October set aside for planning area of meetings. And we should be hearing from our constituents in those planning areas and realize what is most important to them. Um, I'm wondering if a work session with you might be more beneficial for all of us after that input. Okay. So that we have some thought processes. I know Joy is sitting behind you. If she has any input in in as far as the planning process itself, and then some suggestions about pros and cons, you know, what's available, what isn't.
True. I think if you're not already, you need to be part of the technical working group. Is he? You are?
Yep.
Uh, real quick, you mentioned earlier, you you're you with the game and fish and partners. Elaborate.
Yeah, yeah. So our our research partnership in uh Arthur Middleton's lab as well as uh the Wyoming Preparation Initiative um are two kind of bigger partners. Um, yeah, we're we're welcome to whoever else. I know that there's a consultant that uh working with you guys as well, hoping to have spoken as well. We want we want folks at the table, you know, uh whoever it makes sense to.
Yeah, just a quick question about deer in particular. You were talking about mule deer in particular, uh basically is more their proof of winter range gets fragmented and developed, that they tend to move off and go elsewhere.
Yeah.
And just curious, as they move off, you see whitetails coming in and filling that void, because they are much more adaptable.
Yep, and that's that's one thing I didn't touch on, but um we have seen a a a large increase in number of whitetail within Park County. Um, we increased licenses, I think, by almost uh three to four hundred for whitetails for that very reason, because we're seeing them. They're more adaptable, uh, they seem to do better in these kind of smaller neighborhoods and uh um, you know, kind of dealing with people. They're more aggressive too. So once you get them into a winter range situation, um, they'll 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 pick those, you know.
No.
And then they carry CWD usually in a higher range.
Any other questions right now? Thoughts?
All right, now.
Appreciate it.
Sorry. So I've been uh, I've been talking with Tony down for quite some time and some of the other conditions that they're working with. And this is part of that conversation of whether uh Park County should consider a wildlife overlay for the land use plan and the future regulations or not. I think everybody recognizes that they're in the value wildlife. It's just what should the county role be
Right.
in considering wildlife and development applications. And so um it, the big question is, you know, how do we achieve conservation of wildlife while also recognizing that the population is gonna grow and human development is going to increase in the county? And and where do we want to be in that in that conversation? So when Tony talks about having that discussion with you, that would basically be what the discussion is. It's, you know, based on what we get from the public, on the land use plan uh hearings, and then your thoughts as well. What is that going to look like, if anything? And so they're willing to come to the table with some suggestions, kind of a spectrum of suggestions. And then outfall will be maybe a wildlife overlay or something else related to wildlife. So that's really the goal. And I had recommended possibly um your second week of Tuesday in the afternoon um as a possibility in particular, because it's right before hunting season kicks off and gets crazy.
It's already here.
No, not the real one. The big one, but that's the complete one. So anyway, I think that maybe that's second week of October.
We can make a note of that and and see what we can see what we can fit in. Okay, Tony, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yep. Next on our agenda, uh Kim Delvin, Park County Planning and Zoning Staff, Schumard, simple subdivision number two ninety four. Nice timing, Brian. Um, final plot.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this project is Brian Schumard. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Coda Powell Rule. We did receive a final plat application from Mr. Schumard um and signed by the property owner. And that occurred on August seventeenth of this year, and a revised final plat was received on August twenty fourth. And you see that final plat, Madam Chair, you see that in figure one. The applicant requests approval, this final plat, it'll be a one lot subdivision. They'll create twelve point eight, a twelve point eight acre lot from an existing two hundred and thirty two acre parcel. It'll be for residential use. It is, as I mentioned, it is in GRP, and this lot size as proposed is consistent with that zoning district. The location is shown in figure two of the simple subdivision. It's approximately three and a half miles southwest of Ralston. It's almost a mile west of Highway two ninety four and just south of of County Lane twelve. And it does have a, the property does have an address of eighteen fifty, Lane twelve. Terms of site characteristics, proposed lot one is developed. It also is irrigated ag land. While the remaining portion or the remaining parcel is primarily irrigated ag land. Lot one does have a residence and multiple accessory buildings on it. You can see in figure three, the topography um relatively flat, at least up where the simple subdivision is proposed. Figure four shows the neighboring property uses primarily agriculture. Notice of an, oh, and this property is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required. Notice of intent for this subdivision was in the Powell Tribune on June seventh and June fourteenth. Agency referrals were made. We shared all those comments with you. Park County Fire District One said they will be able to provide fire protection should it be necessary. Public Works responded in two emails. First one, and both those were shared with you. First one talked about legal access being available from County Lane twelve. Second email talked about any new access would require a right of way permit from them. And they also said in that second email that a runoff and erosion control plan would not be required. Northwest Water responded, they said they could not provide service to this uh potential subdivisions. School District One said they will have busing available should that be necessarily necessary. Garland Light and Power responded with the letter. They said they do have the capacity to serve this lot should that be needed. And I, Madam Chair, they may already provide power, but anyhow, this is a simple, so even if those utilities are not there, they're not required. Heart Mountain Irrigation responded. They said a water distribution plan, of course, will be required. They have received one and that's been approved. Black Hills Energy said they also could provide natural gas service to this lot. TCT responded, said they do have the availability and capacity to provide service to this property. U S Postal Service responded, they said they will be able to provide mail delivery should it be developed and the subdivision, of course, approved. Park County Treasurer stated property taxes are current. Wideup responded, just in general, again, with with permit requirements, should there be any uh anything needed in regard to um subsurface water? Or or stream or um surface water. Game and Fish responded, they have no terrestrial wildlife concerns. However, they did offer sort of standard subdivision recommendations. We shared those with you. Mary from Wheaton Pest responded, she found noxious weed um weed species during her initial inspection. However, she's not asking for a noxious weed plant because of condition, my guess is probably because the amount of agriculture on the parcel, I think memory serves, it seems like with ag land, a lot of times uh specific weed plant is not required. In this case, she said no weed plant required, but asking the applicant to follow best management practices. So the uh percolation uh rates were found to be between two and seven minutes per inch. And groundwater was found at a depth, a shallow seven feet. That's with that subsurface evaluation. So it appears like should the subdivision be approved and development occur, conventional and ground subjects will likely be sufficient. And the Clark, uh Powell Clark's for Conservation District, they did provide a soils report. We shared their cover letter with you. They found two soil types. And in that, they stated any limitations and any um requirement or any um circumstances surrounding those soil types. We've not had any public comments. Planning and zoning reviewed this sketch plan on July twentieth of this year, a number of conditions. And I just want to summarize those. The first one, talking about easements. Their second condition was noted on the final plat regarding water wells be permitted by the state engineer's office. That condition has been met. Their third condition was a soils report. Of course, that condition has been met. Their fourth recommended condition was an engineering review from Public Works. That condition has been met. Their fifth recommended condition was a note on the final plat um in regard to the warming uh right to farm and ranch act. Plat Review Committee looked at this final plat on August twenty second. They had some minor corrections and changes. Then we received the revised final plat on August twenty sixth, and of course, that's the final plat that you that you had a chance to see. The rest of page eight in our staff report is just the submissions for final plaque review, all the supporting documents and what the final plat needs to look like, a paragraph talking about final plat review. Madam Chair, we have a number of findings that you had a chance to read. Our recommendation, our staff recommendation is approval of the final plat of the Schumard simple subdivision two ninety four with the following conditions. First one is the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities in special districts, irrigation districts, or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system, but no case shall shelf such utility easement be less than twenty feet in width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. Our second recommended condition is, at the time of transfer of ownership of lot one, the applicant shall identify all easements that benefit adjoining property owners at a minimum on the instrument transferring ownership. Um, Madam Chair, just to comment, you'll see when you look at the final plat, there is an easement that's identified going across proposed lot one. Um, this is kind of a change in in our philosophy. We feel it would be advantageous in the future for easements like this to to for the the applicant to identify what is the easement for and who does it benefit? So you'll probably see language like this coming from us in the future. We just think it's a good idea. Our third recommended condition is the applicant should always comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and minimum subdivision requirements at set forth in statute eighteen five three oh six. We're happy to answer questions.
We just have one, and it it has to do with the remaining parcel and that easement that you were just referring to. That easement looks like that's the only entrance to the remaining parcel or the only access at this time to the remaining parcel. Is that correct?
You you know, is there, is there access? I I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I think and
There's a, yeah, Moppy actually meets up with Lane twelve for two hundred feet. So the other uh movie of the year gives an easement behind the house. That should be the only position.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I guess my question had to do with access to the remaining parcel and possible future uses of the remaining parcel being the access only fifteen feet wide. I mean, that just Okay.
On the northeast side.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's a high access.
Over there, okay.
He didn't want, he's been, he wanted to own all the it's Bill that has the
Okay.
Bill that has all the, I have, has the the group that owns all the uh health fitting businesses.
Very.
Very.
Okay, okay.
He's the, he's the landlord or he buy the
He's he's buying that that overuse.
Gotcha.
And um, so with Buck Creek Dragon, I had that beast's option. And so I ended up selling the back piece to Phil Perry, keeping the house.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So
Okay, as long as there's access, there will be stop process. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, it's not a public hearing, so. What is
I'll move your approval. Where's that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove as presented with staff recommendations. Any further discussion? None of those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Can pass this.
Twenty twenty two ninety one.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we have one more today, whatever, ten minutes, so. Mr. Trevor out there?
Today. I failed the fishing test, so I have to do remediation.
Oh, no.
Would you open?
I opened. It was one of our, it was from the IP department, and we were having a land use plan, and I just went on a quick Who let you?
Oops.
Know before you know.
No.
I have to, I have to do remediation.
The old days, they put you in a camp.
Okay, our last thing on the agenda today, uh, Derek Cotton Horn, Buildings and Grounds Superintendent, departing regarding a request for a additional buildings and grounds maintenance position. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Uh, I would like to request uh your operation authorization to add a buildings a building maintenance technician to the position to the Buildings and Grounds Department. The department has been operating under staff, and it is negatively negatively impacting our county facilities. Staff is spending the majority of their time fixing what is already broken and little to almost no time is available for the maintenance of buildings to prevent future costly, unexpected repairs. A few things to consider, uh, Park County Buildings and Grounds maintains four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building space. Palt survey in two thousand seventeen by International Facility Management Association reported that for the municipal government sector, the median square feet of building to full time employee is fifty thousand. We currently have five positions, therefore averaging ninety thousand square feet per employee, nearly double. This above mentioned Palt survey pull grounds keeping duties separately. The data reported is specific to the maintenance duties only. Our department is also responsible for fifty eight acres of grounds. By adding a position to the department, the board can expect the following benefits. A long overdue list of projects to be completed, cross training of department staff, which is non-existent, proper preventative maintenance program, a higher level of safety for employees and also the public. Uh, thank you for your consideration.
Um, and your budget currently does not include this position, correct?
Yes, correct.
And what kind of it's gonna be a ballpark number, but what do you figure the value that needs to be looked at for your budget would be?
Well, I've got uh the pay scale range is from eighteen oh nine to twenty five fifty three. I'd like to be somewhere in there so that we can draw some potential candidates. I've I've given you position, what their I've I've given you position, what their responsibilities are, they're pretty extensive and uh fairly technical in the the two position. Technician two position.
Question?
A question for the Commissioners, um this job description from two thousand nineteen. Um do we have a lot of these that aren't filled with job descriptions or is this something unique or why was this created and not filled? Or did we lose somebody and just not fill it?
We have Tech One, Tech Two, and Tech Three. And a couple of them have been filled and left.
Yes.
Um and others, they he he didn't have enough people allotted to the department. So we we currently have Tech One, Two, and Three, so this job description could be in use, but he's asking for an additional one. Correct?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
But you already have a Tech Two already.
Unless it's one of them.
Yes, I do, Mark Erlock or down in Powell, he he I would classify him as a student. He he's a little short in some of those descriptions, but we could bring him up to speed easy. Um other than that, you know, you know our situation, so. It plays a big part in this and uh you know, where I stated that we can you have staff that sometimes they go on vacation, they sometimes hurt themselves at softball, and stuff arises, so. That's another reason I feel that this would be a good position to fill at this time.
Yeah, just a question, I'm not sure you can answer it, but you haven't been with us that long. But I know for a number of years now, buildings and grounds were constantly understaffed. We always have been. Do you have any idea the last time that buildings and grounds were fully staffed?
Fully staffed, well sir, I do not.
You know, I I guess.
I'm sorry to add to that, I guess I don't know what fully staff would have been in the in the past. Um I've looked through a lot of documents in my filing cabinet, dating back to two thousand ten, and it always seemed like we were right in these numbers. Five and six. There but one time, I believe it was seven. None of the names during the bill.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess where I'm going at this is you know, I mean we've tried very hard not to increase county government, we really have. And this year, because of additional revenue that we received, our budget process was the easiest one I've ever participated in. And we did, we had plenty of money, we're doing a lot of projects we hadn't put off for a number of years. My crystal ball telling me moving forward that it's not gonna be as rosy the next couple of years that it has been the last two years. And so I have a very difficult time increasing personnel at the county level, knowing sometime in the relatively near future, we may be having to lay people off. And that's why I asked a question about, you know, how we were operating when we were fully staffed. The buildings and grounds, to my recollection, have not been fully staffed, I can remember, you know, when Mike was with us. And our staff manager was telling us, well, so-and-so's out and so-and-so's hurt and so-and-so's having back, so we were always down one or two people. So I'm just wondering, now we're down two people. So if we get those positions back up and running, three, three people? Okay, so we got three people out now. Maybe if we get those, the one person I know that hurts, maybe when he gets off, then we fill the other two positions. Be in a better position to make it work faster. Anyway, that's what it feels.
Madam Chair, I mean, I agree to a certain extent with Joe, it's but
Not a not a hundred percent?
Not a hundred percent. That's happened before, um. I don't want, I mean, I I understand your position of saying, okay, if we add this position and and next year, the revenues aren't the same or whatever, well, let's let's cross that hurdle when we get to it. We've got, if we can afford to put this person on right now, it might, if we can find someone, it might behoove us because we could catch up on some stuff that needs to be taken care of. And yeah, if we have to, if we have to cut a position, next year, we cut a position. But I that's kind of where I'm at on it, is we can, if we can afford to do it right now, it's let's do it and hopefully get ahead of some of this.
Okay, well, that question that Trevor was, do you have the money in your budget to cover another position?
I don't think it's in there currently, but
I think there's gonna be some hole with food leaving, there's some high dollar
Yeah.
prospects leaving there, but instead of hiring back people that I would need to extensively train, like these guys have, they've been trained. That wouldn't, hopefully, I can get past that part of it, cut these guys loose a little bit more freely and stuff.
Well, yeah, there'll be a little bit of budget swing, it won't be a whole thing because of the way resignations happen, so we can work through that. Um the other thing that comes to my mind in talking about staff is we've all been told over the last few months about what's gonna happen with the whole HVAC thing over the next couple of years and moving full departments out of rooms and shifting things and and doing all that, and I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that with our stat current step and keep moving. I mean, I don't know how much of that's gonna be on us or his department and how much of that's on a contractor.
Yeah.
But I do know that our employees deserve as much help as we can give them through this whole process if we're gonna displace them.
Madam Chair, um you're currently looking for two positions, three you said, but one, two technical positions, right? Yes. And there are tech or twos like this? Oh, I would say one is a manager, which would be just above a tech three. And the other one would be a tech two. And then one is a combo. Two ones, I have for the other two gentlemen that are staying. So I have two twos, two ones, and a three. You know, yeah, but what do you have? Right now? What are you looking for right now? Uh tech two. Yeah. Yeah, with a little more tech and training, a little more I'd be, I'm I'm kind of siding with Joe. But I see what I understand what Lee's saying as well, but I'd like to kick this down a little until you fill those positions at least and see where we're at. Um especially budget-wise, if we don't have to do a budget amendment and stuff. I mean, it might take you a month to find, to fill these positions. And but I would say that my suggestion would be, if you find two, three rock stars that come in, you can't decide, well, I'd like to have all of them. I'd I'd be willing to, let's open this up, discussion up again, you know what I mean?
I'd like to just go ahead and have him have that option right now. But that's me.
I could, I could work, you know, we could look at the budget a little closer, I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at this. On top of everything else that's going on, I'm kind of scrambling a little bit, but there are some holes that have been created and they're just lightly patched, something's gonna fall through. That's that's where we've been so far, we've had, that was before me. So things just haven't been done. We've just been putting out fire, like more than even. So Mike, like I get, you've been here long enough now, what do you see the ideal maintenance techs? All of our building in Park County, where do you, what do you see the ideal two, one here, one there, three in Powell, what? I see this guy in particular, the extra, whatever the, it may be the other two I hire, but being able to send them anywhere and be cross-trained, there's none of that, but you've got guys that are specialized in one thing. And they can't do other things so well, but you know, they can go muddle their way through it, it'd be nice to be more efficient. Do you see that need here in Cody more than Powell, so I guess when you start looking probably, I guess they, it's up to the applicant if you find the right person, if you're looking for somebody more in the Cody area. Now, I mean, Cody would be the ideal location, but I think that with Mark down there, uh he would be more than helpful in that transition if they were to have to go down there and take his place. But do you need a second in Powell, or can you be the second? I would be a second, sure, absolutely, then we have a, they just hired a buildings and grounds custodial slash buildings and ground guy down there. He's gonna be a huge help for Mark.
Okay.
He's gonna take the load off of Mark. And hopefully free him up during this transition to be able to come back up here and give us a hand. So the two over there, you're actually only looking for two. If not counting this. Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Well, you said three or
Well, one, there's one out medical right now. Is what we're saying.
Three out. He's probably eight weeks. There's three, one out, but we're not looking to replace him.
No.
He'll be back. Well, that's where I was confused, I thought, where in the hell?
No, it's still three. Because you're referring to Mark staying. The other one is under events. The partial custodial maintenance is under events, and he's saying he can borrow him and use him to support Mark if need be. Then he still has the one out. So those two are in Powell, so Powell's kind of covered. Okay, then we have the one out for the injury. Right, which is coming back. That's a Cody, and we have the two resignations. And then you were asking for one above the resignations, right? So he's asking to cover the two resignations plus one.
Yes. My confusion was you were out currently looking to hire three.
Yes.
Not counting this. Right, that's not true.
Yeah, Madam Chair, in fact, I just I guess, I guess, after listening to what Lloyd had to say, I I would agree with him. You know, maybe maybe we do need a third person to build into the ground, but I'd like to see the two positions that we have open right now filled and get them cross-trained. And then see how the whole thing comes together. That's where I am, and then, you know, if you come back to us and say, look, I just can't do the job with the staff that I have when you're fully staffed, then I'm certainly glad to take a look, another look at it. I know Colleen did it a number of years ago, she was down off an employee and she said, I'll see if I can do it, and you came back about six, seven months later and said, I just can't do it, I'm so far behind. So we gave her that position back. And there's nothing personal against you, that's what I feel.
Uh Trevor, what's the uh priority, would it be the manager first and then maybe the tech two and then maybe the other or?
Can you pick?
I would, I would wanna start with a three or two slash three, someone that's at that level that I could get going. And hit the ground running pretty much, so that I could concentrate on other things, maybe train another one or a two or I just need to, I need to wrap my head around the the cost, I know what the range is here. Um and I know that these positions were open for a long time, even back in, you know, two thousand ten wasn't too bad. They seemed to have a pretty good turnaround then, but it's it's a wholly different world after, since we were fully staffed, it's it's totally changed since that time. So it's something that I felt we need to maybe look at a little closer. Maybe there's some leeway, we have, uh like you mentioned, the huge HVAC project coming up, that thing is gonna be immense, uh the manpower that we may even need for that.
And at this point, you're the only electrical?
Uh yeah. They can change balance out and things like that, do some resetting of equipment, but you know, there's, you know, yeah. I've got one guy, he pretty much just wants to do the grounds, so.
And the outdoor type.
But yeah, so if you if you do the math then, there's many left, so. What is the range, it's from a two and a half to three?
Said eighteen to
Yeah, eighteen oh nine to twenty five.
Ten to twenty five.
Well, I don't have, I don't have them, I don't have them all. Guess I just brought in what I was kind of looking for, I guess, I can, I can definitely get them to them. Well, you get what you pay for, I mean Exactly. I was surprised to see these ranges. So it'd definitely be something that when you interviewed somebody, you would determine. You're a rock star and I maybe I know you, like heard people talk about you, then And as Commissioners, I'd like to find a way that we could bring him in on a probation thing, and I know we've discussed this before. And, and you know, starting him at twenty and saying that, you know, in three months, if you're
We've done that on a few positions.
Maybe not since you've been Talked about it, but I've
I recall doing that on a, on a couple of them.
Cause that's, that's a great option, I like that.
We can.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we uh prove the extra position. I'll second it.
So moved and seconded to approve the request for the, for the additional position for Buildings and Grounds Maintenance. Any further discussion? Are you none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Huge. I'm in favor of doing it, I think we need to.
There's no guarantee it's gonna get built, that's where I'm at right now.
No.
And I'm looking away, what we have workload-wise coming down the pike and what stuff that hasn't been could be taken care of and
I have lists that I have given for months, months and months to that department that has
And also, since two thousand ten, and I'm, we've added two buildings. Corner building, the fair, fair building. Yeah.
And perhaps your first two hires will be super people.
That'd be great. As long as everybody stays healthy and
Yeah.
No more vacation.
No vacations.
No vacation.
So these positions, no without vacation, right?
Beginning of each season, when I was doing a lot, a lot of summer, summer trail rides and stuff like that, I hired extras, cause I knew I was gonna be getting rid of some.
Yeah.
And they'd be quitting or I'd, they just, I'd be firing them. This is the only way you could make it through.
So Winton, listen, I know it's already passed and everything, but can he at least have permission to offer a condition period?
I think that's
What would be, what do you think of the exception?
What do you, what do you think?
Wow, I don't think I'd say minimum thirty days to ninety. Yeah, ninety, you've been here two months now.
You're still on probation.
You just didn't know it.
Well, run everybody off, so.
You're, you're doing great.
You know, I'm just thinking one thing real quick. Before we offer some type of probationary employment, you might check with Brian's court, I'm not sure that's legal with that will employee. Because if you give them expectation, then basically you're signing a contract with, even though it's a verbal contract.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
I'll ask him. I don't think that conversation's come up before, but okay.
No, it hasn't.
Okay. Well, that's kind of at will, if they're not doing, but but the idea was not necessarily perform the job, the idea was a change in pay.
Yes.
Okay.
The cola and the the possible two-step, because that doesn't get them to where they need to be, to start them on a trial basis.
But I mean, that that would take action of the board.
We can still do that, it would take action, but I
Basically, it would
I guess you can always come back to us and say
Yeah.
Thank you, Trevor.
Alright, thanks.
I hope you get some good people.
Do you, do you have a couple of minutes? We're about to adjourn, I was gonna visit with you.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
I moved and seconded to adjourn. There is no discussion, all those in favor?
Maybe there is discussion.
Aye, I guess.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Hey, you can BS, you can BS the players, you can't BS fans.